I'm going to call this meeting of Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong members. And I'll ask you to join me.
I'd like to wish this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oral Communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject, not on the floor. This is the Rock community. I would just like to recognize that we have all of our principals, as well as our sped director and our IT director and this gentleman and the preschool director, all here in attendance. Is there any other recognition? Cody.
Cody.
Cody. Who's just confidently is Cody. Are there any other recognitions? Saying I will move on to our Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council.
Hello. So, tonight is the boys varsity first round of the tourney. I've just totally butchered that. Boys basketball, their first round tourney games tonight, it actually started a minute ago. Sophomore event for the sophomores is planned for March 8th. Junior event is planned for March 22nd and the ROTC cadet ball is planned for March 29th. We have a blood drive on March 15th. It's a Friday, so we're hoping to get some donations, help save a few lives. We also have, there's a, the freshman class had a fundraiser at Chipotle the other day. I heard it went pretty well.
It was really successful. There's lines out the door.
So, that's good. NHS inductions, March 28th, mark your calendars. And I think that's all we got for tonight.
Alright.
That's all we got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay as always.
We're game to catch.
Go cheer up boys.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that we should remove for separate discussion?
I'm hoping we approve the consent agenda in a second.
I would just like to point out on the donation that the Norristas is the flag football league in Gloucester and I think it's quite admirable that they've raised $2,000 to supplement that nature's classroom dress. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And we'll move on to the feature presentation of the presentation of the FY 2020 draft budget. Just to preface this, this is our, the presentation of the draft budget. We will then review this, where tonight we will probably hear from, there are a number of things in the budget that are not included, but they are listed in the presentation. And that is why we have all the department heads and principals here, so that we can, they can make their case for why we should perhaps include these things in the budget. And it's mostly personnel, so.
It's my pleasure to present the FY 20 draft budget and the key word is draft at this point. As we look at the calendar, we began this process, or as some people like to talk about, we began this journey back in November and it culminates at the end of June with the adoption by the school committee. There's a lot of steps, as you know, between the start and the finish. If we can move to the next slide there. And the next slide there. Moving real fast. The FY budget, FY 20 budget totals 43,372,000. That is a proposed increase of 1.4 million, or 3.42% increase. There's several changes to the budget. Typically, the cost of living or COLA adjustments for salaries, health insurance increases, and then step and lane changes referred to all staff changes.
I'm trying. I'm trying.
Alright. Here is the detail of the specific cost adjustments. As you'll see, the first three are the salaries based step and lane. We did lose a grant, essential health grant, for $60,000 to pay for a nurse. That is now being moved to the general fund. And then our food service, as we monitor our food service fund, we're very concerned at the end of the year if we'll have enough to budget next year for the food service director out of the food service fund. So, to be conservative, we move the food service director's salary to the general fund, or 82,675. Health insurance, we have in the budget, a 7% increase. Now, the GIC is voting tomorrow on plan rates and then we'll have a better idea of the true cost to the overall health insurance for our staff. And then we'll make adjustments.
Excuse me a moment, Gary. The 7%, the original figure was recommended by the city administration.
Yes. The city, we were advised by the city between 7 and 8% and we budgeted at 7%. We were advised to wait through, wait through the GIC process as they determine the plan rates and then go through our open enrollment and see what our staff members, what plans they chose. And then we can do the math and then determine the adjustment. We're hoping the adjustment would go down and that there'll be a reduced budget for health insurance, but at this point, we're being very conservative at 7%.
But also, health insurance, as different plans have different percentages of what their increases are, so. Depending upon, like.
The mix.
One, the city may have a different percentage in total than we do in total because they have people on different plans. But different towns and cities have, so we have to examine almost every individual plan to come up with that percentage increase.
Yeah, the plan rates were, on average, went up 3.3%. But our, it depends on, you know, what our staff members have chosen. So, there are different plan rates, different increases to the different plans. And some of the plans that were chosen by our staff could be higher than the 3.3%. The budget for out of district tuition, at the time of printing, we had projected four less students and that amounted to, after factoring in circuit breaker, which is the state aid for out of district tuition, and then factoring in prepaid tuition, our budget went down, is projected to go down 154,000. Few caveats, that is a very fluid number because this week, in fact, we had additional, potentially two more students to be placed out of district for next year. The increase, or the placements can average between 50,000 to 300,000. So, one student could have, you know, significant impact upon the budget.
Excuse me, Gary. I just had a conversation with the director who indicated over the last couple of weeks the increase to our current budget because of move-ins, out of district placements, is in the neighborhood of, in excess of $300,000. So, and that happened in a very rapid period of time.
And the two students that Gary is referring to are students whose parents moved into this district who are already existing in out of district placements.
I just wanted to ask a question. We were on that topic. Is there any way we can label that out of district sped tuition as opposed to?
Easily.
Because I think it's confusing to the average person that reads it to think that it might just mean kids going out of district.
Sure.
Clarify it.
Sure. Good point. As we factor in less out of district students, that will have an impact upon transportation. As less students to transport, that should go down a little bit. Our science curriculum, we're getting new textbooks for our science for the elementary grades. That amounts to $88,000. Technology, another increase. Chromebooks are at the end of their useful life, need to be replaced. And additionally, iPhones are being purchased to be placed in all classrooms throughout the district. There are right now IP phones in many classrooms, but not throughout the district. Let me just turn this over to Grant if you would like to embellish.
Sure. I'll set up this easier. When we first switched over all of our phones to IP-based phones at the schools, we didn't have enough money to do every single classroom at the time. We took care of several of the buildings. So, for example, the high school has a phone in every classroom. Veterans actually got a one in every classroom because their intercom aid system had failed. So, we want to make sure we communications in every classroom. West Parish got them because it was a brand new building. The rest of the schools have phones, but not every classroom. They have intercoms, but that does not give them the ability to dial number one out from a room in an emergency. The proposed project that we've added to the budget will allow us to put phones in every single classroom. So, all rooms are exactly the same across the district. It also allows them to call back and forth between rooms, they can call between other buildings and talk with parents who have transferred in. So, but the primary goal is public safety to make sure that they can always dial and call them out onto the property classroom.
How much was that?
That's approximately $40,000.
We have in the budget $50,000 as a lease payment for the Chromebooks replacement. We're planning on a three-year lease, $50,000 each year. That will buy us enough Chromebooks to replace the ones that are at the end of their useful life. And the leasing provides more opportunity to buy more Chromebooks that have a smaller chunk each year. Would you have any further questions during?
The $40,000 in phone hardware being installed in at least one school that'd be like the, it's going to be undergoing renovation, placement, or deconditioning, will that couldn't be able to be transported into a new facility?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, actually, one of the things we were planning on possibly keeping the existing phone system from one of those locations and moving into that building and the one that was, if they do decide to build, you know, a building that causes two schools, that other unit can become a hot spare. We did the exact same as West Parish. We took the phone system, moved it to the swing space, and when we built the new facility, we moved it right back in. So, all the equipment would be moved around this module. Handsets, if there's an extra, become spares for other buildings in the district.
I think Tony wanted to add a little bit more on the technology.
The Chromebook replacement stuff is actually built into the regular budget. It's competition.
No, it's because of sort of the constant things we've had to do, we've had to look at doing some creative financing and leasing to keep our hope. Our devices are five years, but we have a three-year period now and we have to decide, had to basic cycle of all existing devices. And the leases, the only way for us to financially do that with the money that we have in the budget, equip the next several years to keep that cycle of hardware replacement going.
But, I mean, for new stuff that's in the budget, we've got the cameras.
Sure. Yeah, there's also cameras up in there. There's building security.
There's also, you know, network hardware, yeah. There's, you know, the door, the door lock systems.
That's part of, that's part of also.
That's all new expenditure that adds to this.
Correct. And there's also some maintenance contracts that are ongoing for these door access and camera systems.
Yeah, it's never really paid to the budget. It's support and expansion.
Exactly.
Yeah, just wanted people to know that these are things that a lot of us can do with safety.
Yeah.
And a lot of else is new costs.
New structure to run those.
These new costs. And they're not been recurring in budgeting in for the Chromebooks, but these are new.
Yeah.
One time. As we have to maintain these systems.
Correct.
So, I was thinking of asking this question and now hearing Tony talk, I want even more so, I want to ask it. Is there a way under technology to add a safety topic? Because I don't want it to get lost in the word technology when these are priorities for the school district, you know? I mean, the telephones, I mean, yeah, it's technology, but why are we adding them? Mostly for safety. The locks on the doors, many buildings in Gloucester need locks on doors, but we're doing it for safety. So, I can't help but wonder if it'd be better to differentiate between the safety issues and technology a little bit more, just so that when we're talking about it, people see that we are discussing safety and it just doesn't get lost in the word technology.
So, does it make sense to do a category of public safety within that, then maybe the technology section? Because this hardware and this software and there's all the type of training that goes with that, so maybe there's a new category with some.
I mean, I don't care how it is. I just want the public to know that we're discussing safety and we're putting money into safety and that's where it is in the budget. So, when it comes time to potential cuts, when they're talking about these topics, we can justify.
Can you give me a subcategory on the supply and maintenance category you have in your spreadsheet? Safety.
Yeah, that's, we can.
Does the cameras fall under that too?
Yeah, that's a good point. We can easily do that and highlight the security expenditures under technology. Great suggestion. On the savings side, we do have some savings from teachers retiring. The differential in pay is approximately $30,000. So, we have, due to the retirements of teachers, we do have a savings projected at about $350,000. When you add all the adds to the budget and then subtract the savings, we have about a $1.4 million increase without factoring in any additional new staff. Now, this is a level service budget and approximates the educational program that we had last year. Moving forward, now, these two, next two slides represent the additional staff requests made by the principals and department supervisors. They're in no particular order and at this point, I just organized it by school. O'Malley has, as you can see, the first two, teacher and L para. And then the elementaries each have a request. Then we get to the, high school has a few requests as well. But we talked about the need, a very important need to provide support for the L English language learners and those paras there are very much needed, as well as the sped para. I don't want to, I just wanted to highlight those three that we've talked about as a priority request. Moving on to the next, next page.
We'll come back to this and give everybody the opportunity to speak to the need, but we'll do that after we go through the rest of the presentation.
And the rest are from the high school and then the sped department rounds out the request.
Which is also for the high school.
Which is, yes, good point. Reading specialist is for the high school as well.
I just want to point out also and clarify, the library aid is that so that we have enough coverage so the library doesn't have to close for one of lunch events, obviously, and doing other things.
Right, other closing as well that I can explain.
We'll discuss all of these at the end of this presentation.
Oh, Gary, I'm gonna, I wanna, so, this is pretty self-evident as far as the out of district tuitions of what we had. Underneath is the amount of students that went out. See, that's been pretty constant. But if you look down at the notes, you'll see that it includes a 3% tuition increase which they hit after the budget has come in. So, we have to figure that out and that's, they're allowed to do it, you know, they're going to do it, so you can pretty much be guaranteed. In our budget though, and then it has another note that says does not include circuit breaker or potential for prepaid. Now, we, when they, when the administration built this budget, they made some assumptions. So, in the general ledger budget is an out of district line item for tuitions of $2,746,816. And the way they got there is by figuring in $1.22 million of circuit breaker to offset and then an $857,000 prepaid. So, that, those are the assumptions that have been made. The number that's solid is that 4.8 million. But right now, in this budget that you're looking at, it has the assumption of a circuit breaker of 1.22 and an $860,000 prepaid in it. I just wanted people to understand that that's, where these numbers came from.
What was the gain of the prepaid?
857.
These numbers are very, very much fluid for FY 20 because does not include the information that we learned this week of potentially two more placements for next year. And one of those placements, my understanding is it's around 50,000. So, my point is that 4.8 can still grow and will grow.
And that figure also includes the contingency account at this point in time, what's currently in the contingency account, correct?
Yes. So, if we go to the next slide, this is a graphical representation of the slide we just looked at. And what I wanted to point out was from FY 16, our out of district tuition before any subtractions was just over $4 million. In four years, five years, FY 20, we're approaching $5 million. So, of course, the five years, we've increased that budget by a million. And the next slide is a little bit more familiar. We're looking at revenue here on this slide. Grant adjustments from FY 18 to FY 19 and our grants have been slowly increasing. The two big, biggest grants are your Title I economically disadvantaged students and then your IDEA sped grant of $888,000. So, if we look at the next slide, you'll see the graphical representation of, you can see the two largest grants and then your other titles, Title II, Title III in Perkins, early childhood, round out, and Title IV, round out our grants. Moving right along, this is our, our school by school, department by department increases. And there's a few anomalies that I want to walk the school committee through. The first one in the main office, you'll see 8.25% increase. That factors in, as I mentioned before, the food service director's salary of 80,000. So, if you subtracted the 80,000, the increase would be less than 3%. The high school is at 4%. You subtract out the nurse that we had to move from the grants to the general fund, that would be under 3%. The vocational has a $25,000 expenditure for auto lifts. That lifts the car. So, that's a safety feature and it very much needs to happen. Now, the, the next few categories are your elementary and they're all under 3% as you can see. And their, the normal salary increase would be about 3%. They're less than 3% because of retirements. Moving right along. And if we look at technology, we spoke a lot about technology, really it's, a big portion of it is security. We've talked through that and determined the different increases and that totals about 11.65%. Would have been higher if we would have purchased all the Chromebooks through a purchase instead of a lease. So, this is softening the increase by leasing the computers. We talked about health insurance as a component of employee benefits and that is budgeted at 7%. The other categories within employee benefits are held constant and that's why it's under 7%. Professional development is our $88,000 for our textbooks, science textbooks for the elementary grades. So, when you add all these increases and a few decreases up, you're at 3.42%, about $1.4 million increase. And that is before any staff has been added. I think there's one or, yeah, the next slide, next two slides represent our salaries paid by grants or revolving funds. The total for the grants represent just under a million dollars and the salaries are paid from special education, early childhood, and Title I. Moving to the next slide. School food service has a big, has a lot of salaries charged to that account. You can see in FY 19, it was 480, 480,000. FY 20, because we moved the salary from the revolving fund to the general fund, it's down to 402,000. So, our total is just under a million dollars for salaries paid from revolving funds. And our very last slide that we're going to talk about this evening is our capital needs. And our three big capital needs, we've been talking about this at the previous school committee meetings, our fieldhouse floor to high school, permanent home for the preschool, and a permanent home for the administrative offices. So, those are our three main requests. We have additional requests that we review with DPW and then the Jordan Whittier architects are surveying all the buildings throughout the city to come up with a complete comprehensive list of capital needs for each building.
I have a question about the capital needs. In the vocational budget, part of the 11% was for a lift. What was the other percentage for? Wasn't it to remove something?
Salaries.
It was salaries?
The budget, that's what it is, is it's salaries.
I thought we had to take something out of the.
You might be talking about that crane in one of the, one of the shops that we originally were thinking of. were thinking of removing, but decided just to take the batteries out and let it sit there.
Okay, I think that's what it was.
I think that's what you're thinking of. And it's more than one autolift, if I'm not mistaken, isn't it?
Yes.
It's three, it's three lifts, not one.
So we're getting, the budget is there to put in a lift?
To repair them.
To repair the lifts, and then the remaining 11% is for salaries?
No, the...
No, $40,000 was the total increase.
Yep.
And then 25 of it was for the lifts. So the balance is $15,000.
Fifty for salary?
Forty salaries, and there may have been some other...
I thought it was something that related to capital, that's why I was asking the question, but maybe it is.
Well, that would be the lifts.
So should we put it in this?
No.
I mean, if we need something capital, we'd get it in the middle of the...
We have to get it done.
It's in our, it's in our operating budget, so which means that we're going to spend the money and get it done, because it has to be done.
It's a safety issue.
Putting things into the capital needs doesn't, it's not budget, it's just retrored to the city.
I just think it's a little deceiving, because it looks like we're putting money into vocational education when we're not, so that's why I ask. I mean, yes, the program needs a lift, and this is a handicap lift or an autolift?
Autolift.
Autolift.
Right. It's a service that three of us that are already in vice.
Right. So if the lifts don't work and they're not safe, the kids can't learn about cars.
No, no, I get that. I'm just...
James, if we can, how many lifts are there that we're replacing?
I understand it is four.
Four lifts.
Then, four lifts, and so how replacement?
Did you say the word condemned?
Well, that's, four, four lifts that we need that we can't currently use, that limits the use.
And we lift, and we lift in the shop in total?
Good question.
Like, are any still usable?
We are, we do have lifts that we can use now to, to, to do work, because limits, what we can do.
Those are dead days right now, Mar.
Yeah.
And I was just trying to define the word capital in that question.
Yeah, and if it's a repair, they could, repair could be classified if it's a major, if it's a big improvement. If it's just a repair, it can be classified as a just ordinary budget item.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to, do you want to talk about the staff request?
Well, I think that's where we're segueing towards.
Yeah, I would just stop by saying, are there any questions about anything other than the staff request before we move on?
Okay, sure.
I would just like to point out one thing that I, I noticed. On the, on the salaries paid by grants, in a lot, in a number of cases, those are just partial. Those aren't reflective of how much is spent, some money is spent out of the, the, the ordinary budget.
Yes, right.
Like, particular, just ROTC, it's $90,000 goes to supplement the cost of the two offices that we have there, and we also pay some of that, part of their salary.
Their salary has just, their salary has just been increased by the military, and we have to follow suit. We just received a letter about two weeks ago.
So, and just, just so that it's not like these grants cover, it's not like the Title I grant covers all of the Title I teachers.
Right.
No, that's, that's all, that was the only point I wanted to point out.
That's a good point.
Is that these are supplement to what we have.
And some even just fund like a percentage of a person, right? Not a whole person.
Yes, yeah. Yes, that is correct. A portion of the salaries paid by the grant, a portion by the general fund. Just to be all-inclusive of all the salaries, we put it on the screen for you.
So now we'd like to go to the additional staff requests, and we can take these right in the order that they're on the back, so that, then you'd like to tell us about your...
Sure. So I have two requests that I consider to be essential, or others I would have preferred as well. Last year, there were some reductions. So the teacher is a replacement for our specialist class rotation to relieve the librarian who is, has taken on pretty much a full-time teaching load in addition to her library responsibility. So what we've lost this year by having her teach so many courses is really the robust, rigorous support that the librarian, by trade, can provide to the curriculum and instruction and to students in the building. So it hasn't, she's teaching so much that we have a loss in that area. The teacher that I would like to bring into the cycle would be 0.6. The librarian will continue to teach sixth grade specialist classes, library media class, which involves internet safety, digital citizenship, basic functions of some of the apps, et cetera. So the seventh and eighth grade class that I'd like to bring a teacher in for would be a, in some ways, a project-based math course. We do have a pretty good gap in our ability to provide tier-two interventions, abbreviation, extension, and alternative kinds of instruction in math. So despite the differentiation within the classes, kids who are underperforming either continue to struggle with, with teacher support before and after school, which is often not enough, or they end up in our special education program, which we know brings additional costs. So we'll be looking for ways over time to bring in a more effective way to intervene, do alternative instruction, et cetera. This teacher is part of elective cycle. We could enroll kids in a class that is, is math-focused, based on priority standards that, that kids need to do better with, but in a, in a different way that relates to a more hands-on, problem-solving environment. So that's why I'm seeking for that role. The EL para is to support the increase in, in students that we have coming in, particularly students who are newcomers, who demand a significant amount of hours of direct instruction through the day. So we're currently up to 20, I think, now. We've had three or four in the last two months alone that come in. We have a single teacher right now who's teaching all those students, plus supporting the needs of classrooms. So the para would enable her, again, to, to do more effective instruction to meet the needs of the kids. Oftentimes, she's got kids in a room who are at very different levels according to the designation for EL. So that, that's important, will be helpful to make sure those kids are, are performing and increasing their skill level with English the way we need them to.
Any questions? And you said, and you said you currently have just one English language learning teacher?
Yes.
On staff, and no paras?
No.
How many languages? You have? I don't know. No. I should have the information, so...
Thank you.
But the majority of our, our ELL students are Spanish and Portuguese-speaking. But there are a wide variety, but in very small numbers.
I also have a delayed question. I remember last year during the budget process, the way in which the gap was solved was by cutting paraprofessionals for the district. Did O'Nellie receive any of those cuts last year? And did any of those paras win the position you're looking to fill now, or is it a new position?
We did lose paras. Two of them, I think, were brought back due to the increase in very special education needs. I would be hoping to bring in a para that has some EL experience. That's not to say that one that we have on staff does not. We don't have any spare paras floating around that we could move into that para without.
Thank you.
Okay, Tammy, tell us, okay?
I'm requesting 0.6, special education teacher, that's about 18 hours. Our needs are somewhat unique and growing this year. Next year, I'm thinking we might be requesting additional help this year, but I know definitely for next year. We're a school, a small school of 207 students. We're getting up in a range of almost 40, which would be 20% of our student population. And I'm saying the, the needs are unique. And we have two full-time special education teachers, one who is full-time and also doing the work of a liaison coordinator's position, which takes, you know, coordinating all of the meetings and being present at all the meetings and, and everything else. So it's just being in compliance with the law, giving the students that are eligible for SPED the services that they need. We have used all of our para-professionals to do the best that we can, but these students really need effective instruction. And that's why I'm asking for at least 18 hours, which is 0.6.
Is being in compliance an issue?
Yes. It is.
So 10 hours enough?
I would gladly take more. Like Glenn said, we, there's a lot of things that we would want in our budget, but we have to put forth what is the most place that we, that needs is. And I think we, I really believe next year we could get behind.
So that's like three hours a day?
Well, we've done, you know, like, five hour, I mean, it's five days. So they, we've done it before with 0.6, 18 hours, so we work it out, so many hours, Monday through Thursday or something of Friday. We work it out based on the needs of the students and our schedule of when, you know, like, what grades the kids are in, K 1, 2, 3 through 5, because we're platooning, so that means our, you know, schedule has to fit in to that. So it's growing. We've been looking at our numbers, we've been subtracting our grade five students, we're looking into a lot of testing and kids that are being, becoming eligible. And like I said, the challenges that these children are facing are very unique, and it, and it requires more than a para.
I have one more question. It's, you said there was a specialized teacher that took on coordinator responsibilities?
Yes.
Is that teacher getting a stipend for the extra responsibilities?
She's getting a stipend for the extra, but as in other schools, in, as in other schools, those people are not full-time. My, my para, my, excuse me, my teacher, who is the coordinator, has a full-time schedule.
Okay. So she's got a lot on her plate?
Yes.
Thank you.
So rather than ask this question, although it might be used asking you or Tony or Gary, all the paras that were cut last year, did they all come back? Were any of the paras that were cut when we were trimming to hit our, given to us for administration? Did they all come back, or are there some schools that are?
They, they all came back. Sometimes more, right?
So the list of the, the staffing level you're starting with is the same staffing level you had the year previous? The cuts that were made were unwanted at some point during the year, as far as staff was concerned?
Not entirely. No, no, we, two paras at the high school were not, you know...
Not brought back?
Not brought back. Yep. Not special education paras, however.
No, no, I think, I think para-professionals in general.
Yep.
And we say individual buildings may not have received, but District Y, all the paras were filled and some more. So it's, you can't look at building to building, you know, some building may have lost two or four, and others may have gained three, you know, so, yeah, the list was, everyone was placed, and then there was other, as you can see the postings that come out, there's need.
I'd like to research it, just to get an exact number as to what that exchange is. It's not unusual, on an annual basis, it's not unusual for cuts to be made in order to meet the budget. And then the school year starts, and there are new needs for new students, and you've got to be compliant, so we do something to do.
There's always special circumstances that come along.
I recall being discussed this time last year when it was happening, I just, I never looked into whether or not this happened or didn't happen, actually happened or not. So this way I don't have to ask everybody the same question every time. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's also a date that we have to notify, so you have to notify them, even if you don't do it at all.
Which was done last year, May 7th for professional teacher status, June 15th for non-professional teacher status.
So, East Gloucester, I'm asking for 0.2 of a math coach. It's the third year I've asked for the same thing. We were lucky enough to add the math coach a few years ago, but she split between three schools, which tends to be very stretched, and we have, our scores were doing really well at East Gloucester, but our need is in the math area, and to have a little more time with the math coach would be beneficial. Also, it happens that some of my newer teachers, because we platoon, happen to be math coaches, so to give a little extra support is also needed. And so I'm just asking for 0.2 of a more of a math coach.
I know during our discussions in the smaller, you know, in Sec 8, you explained how this time, how 0.2 actually helps alleviate some of those schedules. So how does 0.2 of hours help? Help that three school split between everybody?
Well, I had an idea that affects the other schools, and I don't know how the other schools would feel about it.
It's not just a 0.2 situation.
You don't hire many 0.2 people.
It's like you're increasing.
But if you were to, if you were to take the common person that's split three ways and split that person two ways, and use additional money at one of the other buildings, whether it be Title I money or something else, to create a position that's a math coach for that building, that would have maybe a split position, I don't know. It was a thought, that might not cost money.
So for $16,000, you could get a math?
Well, I would have, that's 0.2 of a math coach's salary. The person elipir, like you said.
Just a question for Gary. Just so I understand, the 0.2 and the 0.6, are we talking about two tenths of a person?
So it's like, that's a daily?
Yeah. Very short person.
Amen.
So how does, how does it work?
Twenty seven, so if you take the, if you take the math coach and reporter in two schools instead of one, it would be one school without a math coach.
Yeah.
So you would have to make that up with some other funds, whether it be Title, Title I money or something else.
Or the operational budget.
Or the operational budget, yeah.
So is this person that's 0.2 three times is not, is working 0.6?
No, she's 0.3, three, 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 three times, and I'm basing that as a great assignment.
So that's what you're asking for the, is to...
Really probably asking for 1.7.
To make the 0.3 person half of 0.5, perhaps, okay?
I would like our half of weekends to, one day a week and then bonus days, let's be going.
And can you, and I know we have literacy coaches in each one of our schools.
Full-time.
Both in each school.
This is like a math literacy.
Numerical literacy.
Numerical, yes.
Okay? Thank you.
So Beaman is requesting an additional SPED para-professional. We have found ourselves this year with an influx of children requiring larger amounts of time with a para-professional on their IEP. So I'm talking about students that need upwards of 30 hours plus of time with a para-professional. So when you think about that, by the time you give a para-professional their lunch and their break, and, I mean, it, it becomes very close to almost a one-to-one type situation, and it leaves me little flexibility in terms of how I maneuver them to serve multiple students. We are making it work at the moment, but to be honest, we are making it work at the detriment to offering our students any kind of math intervention, which we have been able to offer up until this point. And that's really puts students, the center to support. So to be able to add that back into the equation would give us much more flexibility and would allow us to put that intervention work back in for all students, not just special education students.
So just to clarify, to be in compliance with the IEP, the, in your current situation, that para is working on the IEP, and now you don't have any intervention?
Right, because I had to pull people to make sure that I'm in compliance with all of these IEPs. And these are some new students that I've moved in, many of them are younger students, so they, I plan that they will be with us for quite a while.
So does that leave Beaman the only elementary school without math intervention?
Oh, I don't know about that.
No, we're not, we're all fighting to get math intervention. We have a math coach that is shared with three schools.
Yeah.
And another one that is shared between two schools.
So, so you, the share is not, is working with the IEPs instead? So you, the share is not, is working with the IEPs instead of?
No, the share works with our general education children that don't quite meet that IEP population, but we supplement with a little bit of that to paraprofessional time to be able to help out those groups as well. So that's had to go away to make sure, of course, that we're meeting our IEPs because that's what we need to do. First and foremost.
So should that be described as SPED para slash math intervention? So that, right, please.
Any other questions? Thank you. It looks like, Matt, you said?
Hi, everyone. Um, so Veterans is requesting an English language learner's paraprofessional. Uh, currently the Veterans School is over fifty English language learners at vets. Last year we added a full-time English language learner's teacher, so we have two now. Um, but the needs keep expanding, so we've, um, over the last three weeks, we've had more new students come to the school. We just got word that another one is coming. Most are newcomers, so there's no, um, English language within their knowledge right now, so. Um, and many are, we're finding are what we call SIF, which means that they've had limited education in their own country as well. So requires a lot of work, um, talking with both my EL teachers and EL para would allow us to spend more time pushing in to the classrooms with these students when they're in the regular education setting. There's also, um, state requirements for, um, the time that you have to spend with newcomers, so that's taking up the time of the teachers as well. So there's certainly a, a big need that that's been. Any questions?
So this person would work with, um, students who have had, um, moved along a little bit?
A little bit, but also when those kids are not with the English language teacher, um, you know, and sometimes they can speak their language. Um, they, they're in a regulated classroom, English speaking classroom, they can be pushing in, sort of assisting them as, as they're seeing lessons and stuff like that. So it'd give us a little more, um, work within the regular ed setting to apply.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Tony, you want to ask for something?
Okay, no, thank you.
All right, before I talk about the requests, um, clarify something I, I, about the lifts. Earlier, we looked at several different quotes for the lift, so I was looking at a quote for four. And then I went, so we're currently using three, Joel, to answer your question from before, and there are actually seven lifts that we need to get up and running, so.
So there are seven total and three of which are operational?
Nope.
There are ten total and three?
Ten total, you got it.
Three of which are operational?
Yep, and we have, basically, we're working towards a, the auto shop is the place that is, where we have the full, um, basically full shop, we're getting to point to full shops, basically. Like, in other words, our full capacity with one instructor.
How long have these seven been dead?
Uh, it's been, uh, kind of, it's been one of those atrophy process, right? Like one or two go down, you don't have the budget, two, you know, two or three and you don't have the budget. And then, okay, now we're at a point where it's hampered.
And so this repair work, there's how many? This, this repair work to service how many of the dead ones?
Seven.
So also, so when this is all done, all ten are?
That's right, we'll be fully operational with our, possibly full out of.
We're good, that waitlist is real long, so I'm excited personally.
Glad we're being interviewed.
You might have to claim that as a conflict of interest.
As, uh, as, as you heard earlier, this first, um, need for the nurses is really a level service situation. Currently, you know, we have that point two in the building, but because of the grant going away, uh, it's difficult to explain, it's difficult to explain why it's only point two, but it has to do with how the grant is. We have two nurses at a time at the high school to meet the needs of our eight hundred students and this will get us back to that.
Can I ask a question on that? So I thought in the budget, we talked about all the positions that weren't grant-funded anymore and, or moved into the operational budget. Why is this one an ask if it's a level service? If it's a level service?
The, the, the money that was paying for nurses no longer exists. So we have to come up to, if, if it was paying eighty thousand dollars or sixty-eight thousand dollars, it was paying sixty thousand dollars worth of salaries, we now have to absorb that sixty-eight thousand into our budget.
But we did this with the food service director and just switched it into the operational budget. Why aren't we just doing that with this position?
Part of the process, to be honest, it sounded, I, my experience was I asked.
Only because it's a level service issue, it's not, it's not additional, it's level service. So I'm confused why it's an ask and not just a transfer out of the operational budget.
Well, it's, you know, on, on another slide, in the significant cost adjustments to the budget, you're listing sixty-eight thousand dollars, um, because of the loss of a grant, but it's moved to the general fund, so the question is, is, is this point two part of that sixty-eight thousand dollars that's been moved to that?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Or should it be?
Or, or, or is it just, are we double coming this is?
Because this sounds like you're asking for more.
I thought this was an additional request, so that's why it wasn't part of the sixty-eight thousand. If it was, uh, there would have been eighty thousand. So what you're telling me is that the nurse is what you had this year. You had two nurses.
Two nurses at all times, but what was in our budget. So this would be the part that, uh, would, would need to, was not in our budget, that would need to come into the high school. So I'm just, when we go into meetings, I'm just looking at the high school budget. I don't know what's on the places, so this is what we would need to come back to the high school budget for us to have what we have now.
All right, that, that's budgeted for that.
So should you move that in?
Then you have that, get the grant.
Yeah.
So let's, uh?
That's not an additional. Thanks, buddy.
It's in the operational, so we don't get to, uh, you don't get to consider that.
It's not additional stuff.
Right, right. James, you've got to win!
All right, well, let's see if we can keep the romance of going here. So, um, speak, you've heard a little bit from others about our increasing needs for our English language learners. Um, so we are in a, in a similar position of, um, having added some teaching staff recently and, you know, we thanked the, uh, committee for granting that and, and that expansion as we did in other schools. But what we're finally need for is the support. So this position, although it's called a coordinator, that's a, a legacy name. It's a, it's a name that we had used when we first created this position, when we were first figuring out how to meet the needs of English language learners. Um, this, uh, position does both, um, coordinates, uh, communication with parents, um, when we enroll students, coordinate, uh, coordinates communication with parents of particularly Spanish-speaking, uh, Portuguese-speaking and Italian-speaking students when we ever reach out to them with counseling needs. There's a lot of guidance counseling happening at the high school, post-secondary outcomes, making sure students are meeting, um, expectations for graduating on time. Um, work that our guidance counselors aren't, aren't able to do. So it's both pushing into the classroom and coordinating communication. And also communicate directly with students for discipline reasons and other, other times where we need to perhaps speak with those students in, in their language. At least the primary languages that we have in our building. Currently, we have someone, a grant-funded, uh, position, working under twenty hours per week, doing some of this work, and we'd like to augment that to make it a full-time position. We have the needs all day, every day, and we have to sometimes smoosh that work into the time we have that person there. This would be incredibly valuable, particularly for helping us maintain our graduation rate, preventing dropouts and that sort of thing. And it's a big part at the high school level of the, uh, a big need for our English language learners. Um, many of whom come in with significantly disrupted educations, as Matt talked about, um, and we're trying to get them on track to graduate in, in four years. Some come in as seventeen-year-olds and eighteen-year-olds and, and all sorts of pressures that this person is so. The person we have in math is amazing and I would like to have a beautiful position to serve those needs. Um, alternative to suspension, we're pursuing, uh, a variety of ways of, of meeting this need. Um, as part of the state accountability, a report card we now have, uh, you know, a chronic absenteeism is a major part of that. And we take, and any suspensions of students mean that they're absent for that day. Um, but also, um, for, in terms of academic progress, students who are not connected to the school have much higher failure rates, they become, um, possible dropouts. Um, when we use suspension as a means for, um, the consequences that students are provided, they need to have those consequences, we need to, um, this also helps us address some of the underlying issues. So we are pursuing a grant for this, we're pursuing, um, partnership with the Positive Alternatives for Student Suspension Program in Beverly. We're doing a bunch of different things, but we need, we need to have this in place. This is, um, something that again is really a drag on our students right now and our ability to address underlying causes for, uh, student discipline. Finally, the library aide position. Um, this has been a surprise, you know, to us that this became such a need. Um, so last year, you know, we, we had a cut in to non, um, non-special education aides, paraprofessionals, one in the electrical shop and one in the library. Uh, the cut in the library, our librarian does so much work, um, co-teaching. Um, and some of the things Lynn was actually talking about, that they do in their active program with literacy of, of information literacy and online citizenship and that sort of thing. Our librarian does, working with our staff, and when she's doing that, then she's not in the library. Uh, the library is also where, you know, Grandma knows a lot about this. This is how we, when students forget, our students, when they forget their Chromebook for the day, the one-to-one initiative, it's through the library that they get the, the Chromebook that they borrowed just for the day. But again, if a librarian is, which she should be, right, to push in and working with teachers, then we don't have somebody there. Um, again, we're pursuing and thinking broadly about how we can, um, address that need, uh, but contractually, none of the other, you know, possibilities or things we can do right now that we'd like to, you know, we're broadly thinking how to, how to fit this need, but it is, um, something that, that teachers have noticed, uh, students have looked like parents who have, who have gotten back to us. And me ask, the accreditation team that visited us also made note of this need in the, their preliminary report. So that's why this has found its way there. Questions, Mark?
Reading specialists, is that?
No, I want to ask, I want to ask James. Since you have a few of them, um, I'm going to ask you for?
Prioritizing? Yeah, so the, the, this, they, they are more or less in prioritized order. This is how we spoke about them.
So since the nurse is gone, that's?
Right, this is, the, the, this, this coordinator position, which is a combination of pushing into classes and supporting students and also providing that, um, communication that we so mentioned, that would be the, and again, that, and that's something we can't really fill in other ways, other than expanding that position. These, we are looking to other ways. We need the problem solved. This is, this is one way of, of addressing the problem. And we're taking broadly, using all our resources to try to make sure this, we're going to solve those problems.
And you said the suspension one you're applying for a grant?
We are.
Might be able to split that?
Yep, you have that nursing grant that got taken away and, you can't use it for that purpose, but?
You can use it somehow.
We, we are hoping that they accept our proposal. We spent a lot of time, big collaborative effort, um, with Cindy Junker and some other folks.
And that's a one-year grant?
Because I understand it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's one of the ways. And again, this, this positive, positive alternatives to suspension program in Beverly, where, um, students can choose to, um, you know, as an alternative to, to suspension we may have, they can, uh, transportation can be an issue from Gloucester to Beverly, but it is an option, um, that we're piloting in the second half of this year.
Are these the long-term suspensions or the short?
These are short-term, these are, uh, things that, uh, we, uh, if we had an in-school suspension of our own?
I was gonna say, well, we just do that.
Well, it's, that's what this is.
But that is?
That's it, yep. So it's a combination of in-school suspension and allows us to, uh, address underlying issues um, through, um, counseling and some online, um, you know, baked tutorials and things like that that we've, that we've been able to find. Um, and this person will also be able to follow up on, you know, preventing recidivism. So you're not coming back in there yet. So it's, it's in-school suspension, but conceived of more, more of an intervention than that.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the high school? And we move on to our SPED reading specialist.
Hi, um, so we have, sort of in a bubble year with our language-based program at O'Malley School. Um, we have seven students who are eighth graders that are going to be transitioning to the ninth grade. Five of those students have, um, intensive one-on-one reading tutorials on their IEP. So they're receiving, um, an explicit, um, reading instruction and phonological awareness yet, decoding, encoding and fluency and comprehension. Um, and our staff at the Gloucester High School do not have the training in the reading programs that we're using with these students, nor do they have the time to be working with students one-on-one in individual reading tutorials. Um, so I am asking for a reading specialist or a specialized teacher that does have certification in Wilson or Gordon Gilliam. Um, if we were to contract out with an agency, um, Commonwealth Learning Center, for example, in Danvers, they have reading specialists that will come into your building and provide those services for you. They run about a hundred and five dollars an hour for those services. So, you know, that's going to run us around ninety thousand dollars. Um, our hope is that the reading specialist, if we have a reading specialist or a specialized teacher with, um, some specialized reading instruction under their belt, that they can also be working with some of our ELL students that really do not have any foundation for learning to read English. So that would be another way to use that person if they were this full-time.
And this person would be at the high school?
Yes.
And this is a compliance issue?
This would be a compliance issue.
Any other questions? Is, um, because all of these students are moving up from the eighth grade to the ninth grade, is that free up anybody at O'Malley?
Unfortunately, no. Um, our language-based program at the middle school is, um?
Bursting.
Bursting at the seams. Um, we have a grade program and we have a, a reading tutor that's working with our language-based teacher right now. We're keeping kids in district because they're really effective. Um, and they do a lot of work with the Janet staff too, around helping with kids with language-based learning disabilities. So unfortunately, no, because we've got kids coming in to the middle school from the language-based program at the elementary school, so, yeah.
And what does it cost to send a student to land?
From seventy thousand, yeah.
Each?
Yep.
Patty, I think that's also the expertise that that person would have in our building. It would also be incredibly valuable as we see increasing, you know, reading needs of our students as some of the testing, you know, that is well documented in public, it's, has shown that that is an increasing need as you increase the number of high-need students. And now we're creeping over fifty percent of high-need students. You see that often manifesting in reading skills, and this would bring some expertise into our building that we don't currently have, as Patty said.
Anything else? Well, I'd like to thank you all for coming. And I know that you're a good teacher this year. Thank you very much. Although, um, take out of order, if, if there's no objection, and go to, um, the improvement plans. While we start off, um, I'll get here, what we're like, talk about it and take us a calendar.
Yeah. Yeah.
I wanted to get some batteries for our...
Randy, you have batteries for us?
This is on the high school.
I like looking at...
I remember Mike's story, he got first looks at him before Virginia. Kid went white blood and this time we watched the vulnerable things that he put on the desk and then when he got up to the school, it was a clot, but he never was up there looking that way in the old chapel.
All right, great, thank you very much. Consistent with discussion of the budget, the budget, of course, is the backbone that provides the resources for our academic plans and we have this year's, next year's proposed iteration of the district improvement plan to present to you. As you know, the format is predicated on some strategic objectives, our theory of action, as if our curriculum is unified and coherent, if we are able to satisfactorily meet individual student needs, if we can employ effective use of data and create a supportive, nurturing, collaborative professional culture and community, then we will produce, as our mission statement says, successful lifelong learners, and that's our goal. The strategic objectives are the silos within which the strategic initiatives themselves fall. It's fluid, they're not, they're not discrete where there isn't some overlap, but in terms of just the logic as we develop and formulate what our plans are, it helps us to, in our thinking. So starting with unification and coherence, what you'll hear about is increasing student engagement, which is one of three major new initiatives, which is the result of some of the work that Patty and Greg have been doing with this ECLC collaborative, a part of which I'll be going for the first time tomorrow morning, superintendents are getting involved in this process as well. Curriculum review and revision is an ongoing process in a variety of areas, as is the examination of preschool through graded literacy. And there are a couple of protocol measures, testing, assessments, and the like that are part of our goals and action plans for special education. Under meeting individual needs, a second of the ECLC major goals is to work over the next few years towards a tiered system of supports. We heard how we do have interventions in literacy, less so with math because of numbers, and the whole social-emotional pyramid as well that needs to be addressed. The technicalities of our next-generation MCAS prep, ongoing work with strengthening higher-order thinking skills at all three levels, some of the maintenance and changes in technology, and Grant is here to talk a little bit about that, and our English-minded learners and making sure that they are receiving the necessary instruction. Under use of data, the third of our four strategic objectives, we have the self-evaluation plan, which is a continuation of the work that first stemmed out of the coordinated program review, where we're looking each year to see what the level of equity is with respect to the proportionality of the different subgroups in each of our courses and at the various levels, if at all possible. Looking at the discipline to make sure that there's equity across and that there isn't one particular subgroup which is taking on, you know, a disproportionate amount of discipline and a couple of others. We're looking at stereotyping and bias, which is not a one-year proposition, but looking at all of our curriculum materials and getting involved in that process of making sure that they are as friendly and appropriate for all of our groups and subgroups as is possible. The MCAS is an extension of what I had mentioned earlier, where we talk about a specific measurable goal for student growth percentile. And then the fourth of the strategic silos is professional culture and community, where we are the third of the ECLC, which is again a long-term project on development of culturally responsive, equity-minded teaching informed by database inquiry cycles. Looking at our culture and making sure that what's taking place is what's referred to as additive value, so that any of and all of our groups feel that they are included and incorporated in the life of the school. And then some of our standard communications and public relations stuff, we'll touch on that as well. So that's just an introduction and now we can get into some of those particulars, beginning with increasing student engagement. There are several pieces here that derive directly from the ECLC work that we are engaged in. And the first is at a, at district level, we need to have a fully articulated plan for transitioning to far more engaged teaching and learning. And I'll give you one specific example of that. At the middle school, as you know, as part of the, sorry, the Innovation School Plan, we have so many plans going on, I'm sorry. As part of the Innovation School Plan, project-based learning was a centerpiece. That has grown over the years, but it's something that needs a significant boost and it needs to, we have new teachers who have come into the building over the years, so we need to revitalize that and extend that, deepen that. So as part of our approach toward an engaged learning, we focused in on that and we're working with a large number of teachers at the middle school who have joined the team. One group, I think the group is five or six now, who are representing the total attendant we can have in our district team. So we will be, they'll be visiting mentor schools that are much more advanced or have been doing project-based learning for a number of years, will be establishing partnership, will be involved in a lot of extensive professional development. We have, the best thing that has happened out of this ECLC program is that we've connected with these six districts. Beverly, for example, has worked at one of its schools on pretty deep project-based learning, so we will be partnering hopefully with Beverly to join forces in some areas. At the elementary schools, we have, or we will be extending some of the work that we have done over the last several years and also adding, we've been collecting some work on Melissa Orkin to work on specifically on the principles of autonomy, belonging, competence, and relevance. I could talk much more about that, we have a lot of pieces to cover, so I'm gonna keep moving. The curriculum review and revision is an extension, a continuation from things that you have seen before. We are actually engaged next week in the annual review of math, it will be taking place here for three days in this room. That is something that we depend incredibly on our math and literacy coaches, they've done an extraordinary job, and we are now in a regular routine of revisiting scope and sequence, the report cards, assessments with representative teachers from each of the schools. It's well-established and so effective that we are now getting requests from other districts to come and observe this annual review cycle, so that's an impressive job.
On the curriculum review, does that include vocational program in the group?
This one right here, I'm looking at the elementary school, I have K through five, working our way down through. The, the kind of curriculum review I'm talking about here, this represented from all buildings, who they've not been doing with vocational, that has been based at the building and has been on less of a formal extensive structure that we've established at the elementary school, but that's certainly something...
I think I jumped in and I was seeing the ongoing updating of curricula, physics, chemistry, engineering, technology, biology.
Okay, so that, yeah, that is definitely, that's a different, these reviews are very formalized now and involve representatives from all around and they get together for a full day and they hit each of these items over a three-day period. We will be doing the same with the science program. The O'Malley School is the first year of its adoption of that science program, so we will be undergoing a review of what we saw during first year of implementation and I think those kinds of adjustments. There's ongoing review at the high school in physics, chemistry, engineering, technology, and biology. That happens as well in all subjects. This is in particular focus because of the relatively new science and technology standards and frameworks and as well as adjustments to the state assessments. So that's why this one is highlighted, but those ongoing curriculum development initiatives happen in every subject, including vocational. Middle school math, this is a multi-year project to continually revise our guides based on the third year, I believe, of Big Ideas Math at the middle school. And I notice most of these are ongoing. The next slide is, our focus is around literacy. I'm gonna move quickly through these ones because these are in many ways an extension and we're keeping them in here because we can't let, we can't start something that is an effective practice and let it go just after a year or two. I think we need to establish something as a three-year practice and then we can move it out of the plan because we know it's institutionalized, but for a second or even a third year, I think we need to keep them in here and on radar. You have purge of alignment with reading street and the K through five writing that continues and as well as the evaluation and alignment of lessons with the science program. For example, in just this December, for part of PD Day, all of the teachers are writing came together at one school to do common scoring and common reflection on the writing program and its assessment. So that is something that we've, because it's front and center, it's something that we're prioritizing for our professional development and our common time. The third bullet I want to mention is a really important one because for a long time, we have not had the best coordination between elementary, middle, middle, and high, and that's something that our literacy and also our math coaches are really working to bridge. So for example, our literacy coaches are now meeting with literacy teachers at the middle school and they are working to review the kinds of practices and the strategies that are in place at the elementary school after the years that we've worked with BSRI. And there's this incredible exchange that has been going on that I have not seen before and that's really, I have to hand it to the teachers at the middle school for reaching out and being willing to dedicate time, but also our coaches who are going and sharing their expertise. The fifth bullet I'll also highlight, I did mention in December, we've gotten together to do the common scoring of writing programs. The next two slides, or the next slide I think is special education education, and of course Patty's here to elaborate, I'll start off. The first item has to do with a protocol for eligibility for assistive technology. Assisted technology, as I think you know, is any piece of equipment or product that's used to increase, maintain, or improve the functional capabilities of children with disabilities. And I heard a very, very interesting story a little bit earlier that you may want to relate if you have the wherewithal to do so. The first item includes reviewing a student environmental task and tool framework and protocol to adapt to the public schools. Can you give them just a little bit of...
Sure, well, as part of our tiered-focused monitoring that we're responsible for, the coordinated program review, one of the elements for special education is to develop a very specific protocol for identifying students that need assistive technology. So the SET framework, which is students, looking at the students in their environment, what are the tasks that they're asked to perform and what tools do they already have available to them? That's a framework that has been out there and that people that come from the outside that come in to do assessments actually use. I'd like to bring that closer to home and have our staff trained in actually doing that prior to making recommendations for an assistive tech eval. And so twofold, add it to our current protocols, but also to support the tiered-focused monitoring requirements for the Department of Education.
Right. Item number two, or bullet number two, we all know that students with disabilities in some instances have neurological differences, which can affect skills such as listening, reasoning, speaking, reading, writing, and math calculations. These neurological differences can also be associated with movement, coordination, and direct retention. So one of the second, the second item is to improve our program leaders' understanding of neuropsychological assessments in relation to those kinds of language-based disciplines.
So we are actually working with a consultant for Landmark currently, we're finishing up a series of trainings this, next week. And what I'd like to have them also continue to work with our staff is looking at assessments that have come to us or looking at our own assessments and really looking at the neuropsychological profile to determine whether or not we're missing in our own repertoire of skill the elements that really point to a student that might have a language-based learning disability. So we're gonna continue that working to the fall.
And as you can see, we want to increase the content knowledge and pedagogy for our special education teachers and specifically develop and implement a professional development plan for those teachers and for our ESPs, our paraprofessionals, with a particular emphasis in math. And I would add that we would also be adding information from the GHS turnaround plan once that's developed and add that to the component that would constitute their professional development. And then there's the issue of working at the high school specifically with the student service team and streamlining their procedures in response to parents and teachers' concerns. Anything you wish to add to that? And that brings us to the tiered system of supports. This is a big one. Patty and I were just at a training session yesterday in a webinar for, focused on the tiered system of supports. And this is part of the ECLC initiative. And first and foremost, I should explain it, Massachusetts Tiered System of Supports outlines the kinds of practices and strategies and services that need to be in place to provide appropriate academic and behavioral and social-emotional support for all students at all levels. And you might recognize components of it, a PBIS program, a program that provides academic interventions for students who are in the yellow or in the red, for example, you've heard our literacy coaches talk about that. Those would all be components of a tiered system of support, so students are getting what they need at each level of achievement. It's huge, it's a very comprehensive kind of thing when you consider social-emotional learning as well as all of the academic subjects. So though we're doing it very, very well in academics at our elementary school levels and we've seen really good performance increases at our elementary schools, we now need to make sure that we've fully articulated it across the district and that we have aligned a good multi-year professional development plan. We also want to make sure that, bullet number two, that the good academic tiered supports at the elementary school are now going to be complemented by a similar approach for social-emotional learning. So to give you a concrete example, you know that we have three times-a-year data meetings where everybody in the room focuses on literacy scores and identifies the individual student and the kinds of interventions they need. We'll be adding a layer of social-emotional interventions as well. We'll be adding a layer of social emotional interventions as well. So when a student comes to a data meeting, we won't just be looking at the academic aspect of that student, we'll be looking at all other data and potential interventions that could help that student move because it may not just be additional math support that they need. It may be that they are struggling because at the moment they are unable to attend and to receive the instruction. They're not in a good place to even receive what is being taught. And we need to figure out what we can do to, as interventions, to help that student in that moment. That said, our elementary schools, our middle schools have work to do on replicating the same kind of data meetings and regular interventions in academics. So we'll be focusing on that. Our meeting yesterday was with George Batch and Judy Elliott. These are two nationally renowned authors and trainers and coaches in MTSS. And we've had access to them through ECLC grant. We have a team of 10 that is going to be going next Friday to the first of three full-day trainings. And then we're going to be receiving in district coaching from George Batch is going to be coming here to look at our systems and provide oversight and coaching. Next Generation MCAS preparations. Appreciate it.
These of course refer to the practices that take place at the schools across the board as they prepare for the Next Generation MCAS. I think you already know that for the first time this year in the high school as well as grades three through eight will be taking the computer-generated exam as well. One of the things that we've been doing historically is analyzing MCAS for obvious reasons. And we use a procedure, a process called a closer look. That's been described here before, but it's putting teachers together to look at where the successes are, where the challenges are, answering a series of questions, looking at the answer of the questions that are provided by the state and identifying what and where and how strategically they can work on the areas that we need to strengthen in student performance. Another way of trying to project as to how students will perform on the MCAS is to align some of our local assessments. And as I am told, there's a way to calibrate the easy CBM assessments so that there is a correlation to some degree with how they anticipate students will perform on the ELA MCAS. Keyboarding is like grammar and literature. That is to say that we need to continue the keyboarding exercises that we incorporated a couple of three years ago, but also need to make sure that students are being asked to write things and write things fluently beyond those basic keyboarding skills as well. Using the released Next Generation MCAS as practice items so that it's not only a question of students learning content, but there's a way of navigating these particular questions online that, you know, the more effective and efficient they are at doing that, hopefully the more time they have to think about what it is they want to accomplish while they're taking the test. There are a host of benchmark assessments and formative assessments. The extent to which they are being done online helps to reinforce student learning so that when it comes time to take the Next Generation MCAS and vice versa, they have facility in how to move about, navigate, and answer the questions. And we spoke in length last meeting, I believe, on the GHS turnaround plan and various practices and proponents that are expected for that as well.
This is a core slide. We have mentioned before the strengthening of higher order thinking skills, some of those strategies that we want to maintain front and center and are part of our regular practice and are part of our curriculum reviews and all of our training, our high leverage strategies to deepen comprehension. I've heard a lot about fluency, but we have to really focus on comprehension as well. Strategies such as reciprocal teaching, meta-cognition, QAR, modeling, guided practice. Elementary schools and O'Malley Innovation Middle School, a focus on science education, emphasizing inquiry, investigation, and experimentation. Those of you who've toured the STEM suite of O'Malley know that that is alive and well. We also have, I should mention today, we've had two requests from other districts to come and see the O'Malley Science STEM. I won't mention their districts, but one just kept calling today and wants to confirm a visit of a whole team of teachers to come visit. So Amy and Dave reached out immediately and they'll be providing that. So it's great. It's, I'm really proud of what they've been doing, but this is because they have made the focus. We want to continue that. Continued focus on elementary math and multiple strategies other than standard algorithm. Next slide on higher order thinking skills. I think I'll just focus quickly on literacy strategies at the middle school. Particularly, they have been doing extensive training across all subject areas on keys to vocabulary, which are systematic routines for deepening understanding using context, using all kinds of strategies for truly connecting and understanding vocabulary. The high school will continue its work on revising all written curriculum using understanding by design format for all courses. Principal Hook is a strong opponent of understanding by design and understands it really well and is happy to see that he's continued that issue.
The Want One Initiative is big. We talked about it extensively in the past. We talked a little about it tonight as well, maintaining its momentum. From the financial side, we spoke about ensuring that we have the means to continue to promote the entire program and also to understand that they need to be cycle because these machines age out and they have to be replaced. And there's a lot of extensive work between Grant and Brendan that's going on in that regard. The reason we do all that is so that the teachers themselves will be evolving. And one way of doing that is through the integration of the Google Suite and all that it involves into lesson planning. And I'm aware that both Greg and Grant and all three, Brendan as well, are looking to develop professional development plans in that regard for next year. I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to comment on at this time?
It's not just looking at integrating the Google Suite's loader program, but we're also, every year we're finding the process to make sure that the devices are always up and running and they're always available to the students. We're coming into our fifth year and we have learned a lot of this process over time, making sure that proper insurance policies are in place, loader programs are there. We don't want a broken device interrupting flow of education for the kids. So if we can make sure that there's a loader available to them within the same day that they come in and get those learners repaired and they're back in their hands within a few days, that there's no interruption service. So it's not just the tools, but it's also the entire process of making sure that they have the technology here and at home and it works everywhere.
Right. At their fingertips.
We try.
And in order to support that, you need the upgrades to the technology infrastructure to ensure security, sustainability, interoperability of the systems and all those fancy terms that make the wheels turn and so on. In addition, there's the development of other infrastructure kinds of services, disaster recovery, rollout of VoIP phones, school security systems, reviewing current websites, expanding monitoring systems such as HVAC. We had to do work with the refrigeration system this year and the district service portal as well, which is a means for communicating with the community and parents. In addition, there is, you construct, we talked about this, a plan to meet the needs of a systemic replacement of the cycle for Chromebooks, which is why we've gone to the leasing program. Parent outreach as well, particularly our grade eight parents, so that they are familiar with, you know, why are we putting these in the hands of kids? What can we expect of them at home and how can they support students? And one of the major points is that computers are the tool. It's the education, the computer's the vehicle for where we want them to go. And it ties right in with things such as the project-based learning that we're trying to emphasize both at the middle school as well as at the other two levels as well. And maybe you could explain this a little bit, begin transitioning to a paperless online enrollment system.
Oh, okay.
And is integrated with our SIS system as well.
Sure. So one of the challenges that we have is collecting information coming, students are coming into the district and looking at getting rid of the process of paper, which is a tedious one, there's always the chance of replication errors, which, but we would love to look at how do we look at online tools to simplify the process of collecting that information, disseminating it to the right people in the district, and making sure it synchronizes across all of our systems. The more we can reduce the potential of error and make sure that the content is streamlined all the way across the process from the day they come in or out of the district, that everyone's informed, helps everyone. And to making sure that the information gets into the student information system, that my staff, my other departments that pull the data from there or the other services, it's accurate. We've had issues where I have to make sure I write some reports, do exports. I just want to make sure that we're doing this as clean and efficiently as possible and that there's no, that there's no other issues with the language barriers because if you start going to an online system, you can then use those tools and present that information in different languages. So we're trying to look at, well, if you collect the information, say you're using a Google Sheet and it's presented to you in your native language, but when you submit it, we see it in English. So it helps bridge some of the language barriers. So going forward, these types of transitions really help the district collect information going forward and that makes everyone's life a lot easier.
Lastly, I think we're getting, not lastly, sorry. Sorry, Tommy. As you heard from at least three of our principals tonight, the issue of English learner instruction is very much on their minds. It has to remain in our district improvement plan. Our numbers continue to grow. Complexities continue to increase. We have it as a goal to continue to secure a qualified teaching staff. I will note that there is a potential opportunity that we'll know about later in the month. We have been working with United Way and their connection with AmeriCorps. And they've had a program with Salem Public Schools to put, to place AmeriCorps members as English learner tutors and teachers and aides. And that's a program that has worked really well. And I met with them very recently, again, here in district. And it's very possible that they'll secure the funding to provide us with one or more full-time AmeriCorps members. And it's a 12-month program. They get intensive training. They don't just walk him off the street. Over more than 80% of the members are college graduates. Three of the, out of four of the extremely impressive people we met were AmeriCorps members, started their career. So I hate to jinx it, but it's potentially maybe get through of these AmeriCorps members, which would be fantastic. We'll continue our classes each summer in advanced SEI strategies. Actually, we did one this fall. We've included SEI teaching strategies on our evaluation instrument for all of our principals to use. And we are looking into potentially some grant funding for a summer tutoring program, a summer program for ELL students. Educational self-education.
I had described this a bit at the outset during the introduction. The first has to do with reviewing access for students to all program across all grade levels. This mostly is relevant to the high school to see how many students are taking AP honors and all other classes, what the percentages are, and whether we're doing what we can to maximize opportunity for students that if they're interested in taking something, we can find a way to get them to do so without them shying away and you're feeling that they don't belong or that there's disproportionate numbers based upon any practices we might have. We didn't see that in our first week, but this is something we continually want to do. We'll also be sending out surveys to students and to parents and guardians. And I believe it has six questions, five, if we also send it out to the teachers, asking how they feel about the academics, the extracurriculars, and a host of other opportunities at the school. The Department of Ed has come up with a new student learning experience data where it tells us what the relationship is between the experience of the teachers in front of the particular students. So if we find that the most inexperienced teachers in great numbers are working with our most challenged students, there are numbers that say that this is an issue and you really need to do something about that. And we reviewed that last year in most instances, I think we may have shared that with the school committee. In most instances, we looked like we were in reasonably good shape, but we will continue to do that on a yearly basis. The same is true for disciplinary actions. And I think we all can support the fact that we're moving towards the potential for alternatives to out-of-school suspensions, not only the in-school suspension with the mental health wraparound, but things such as restorative justice and finding ways short of suspensions whereby conflicts among students and certain misbehaviors can be constructively consequential in what they do. And we'll be reviewing the disciplinary action to make sure that those numbers are fair and proportional. And then there is, again, what is going to be an annual review for bias and stereotyping. There's a training session that either has or will be taking place at the high school and the middle school shortly by March. And both schools feel that this year they can review materials in social studies and world language. They're not yet comfortable tampering at this point with some of the other core academics because it's so close to the MCAS and so on and so forth. MCAS goals, this is an extension of the processes that we use to prepare our students. Last year, the student growth percentiles, our prediction was that we would bring them in between 40 and 60. We talked about normal distribution, median ranges. For grades three through eight, we would like to up that just a little bit so that all of our scores at a minimum fall between the 45 and 60 median range. Grade 10 in both the LA Math fell a little bit short. They were 39.6 and 39. something. We'd like to get those to 42 in this year's MCAS coming out.
And then we turn to what could be the penultimate topic, which is professional culture and Part of our work with ECLC has been around the issue of culturally responsive experience and education for all of our students. We had three branches with ECLC and our teachers, one branch of teacher teams focused deeply on this topic. And at the end of our six-month exploration, you've heard about MTSS and you've heard about the project-based learning expansion. The third branch said, there's a strong need here, but we need to go really slowly. So we are placing this in the district improvement plan very clearly that we are beginning the exploration phase because even after six months, our teachers recognized that personal biases that, that, and I'm not even talking about something that, I can have a personal bias, bias about how I teach based on how I was taught. I can have a bias about what I believe the students' experiences are in front of me because of my experience as a student. This is not something that is a negative, but it's a fact. So uncovering those biases across the spectrum is something that we need to take carefully and go slowly. So we will be putting together a team of teachers to evaluate things that are concrete to evaluate things that are concrete first. For example, to look at our curriculum, look at all our printed materials, look at everything that we do to see if that first has cultural biases that, for example, that we just haven't noticed. So we'll be doing a review of concrete kinds of things. We'll be combining it with some of the institutional reviews where we look at, do we have issues of equity in how students are being placed in classes? So we'll be looking at those concrete kinds of things. And then we'll take a closer look at the kinds of things that we bring personally as biases. Some districts have done this for a number of years and have gotten in really deep, but it's something we're going to move slowly with. This is the last section on communications. If there is one more that does need to be had, I'll take care of that. The communication department relations is relatively the same with the addition of the Bridge K. Van. We brought them on. He has already produced and published two videos. The second one being advertisement, so to speak, for Can You Go Out of Registration? And that went out just in time. And Can You Go Out of Registration is happening.
Both in the law.
It's written along. So that's good. Our automated email systems for notifications, our phone contents, our websites, both district and individual schools. It is time for me to ask Grant to do a report card on each of our individual school websites and maybe by our next leadership team meeting so that we can shame them into getting as effective and efficient as possible. Anything that comes in from the Bridge, for example, or anything that we have, we're putting out on Facebook as well. Title One now, or at least for close to two years, has really focused on engaging parents and families in school-based events with looking at literacy and math and technology and whatever they can to feel, to have parents feel as comfortable that we have these academic wraparound services to try and move their children forward. The Superintendent's Corner is almost in the top 10 on the charts. And in fact, I was in the market basket yesterday. And a fellow says, I know you. And he said that, Melissa, this is for you. This is quote, he said, "Any chance I get to watch you on TV, I watch you." So what do you tell them? Was it, was it hellfully gentleman? Tom, Melissa says, and I wear a home. We have our publicist articles. And again, we have had Corey Cucuru from the Bridge meet with our principals. We have a pipeline that is in place. And hopefully, over time now, that whole thing is going to synthesize and work together. Schools obviously are sending out their school newsletters. And we have alternated from year to year either our state-of-the-school presentations or education forums. So that's something that perhaps we may want to talk to... I'm not sure what's turned, but we may want to talk to Christina Raymo and see whether or not we can put on an educational forum by the end of this school year. There's a slide missing. I don't know why, but it's on me. But that's the whole safety issue. Not to be forgotten, we will continue our simulations and our trainings. We had those that took place in the first half of the year. There will be a second round of trainings as well. We are working with the police department. We met with them today, in fact, with Doran Whittier, to talk about the, and I'll be reporting on this in Superintendent's Report, but to talk about security and what we can do to beef up security, particularly the entrances to the middle school and the high school last night. The city council did vote to appropriate $20,000 for an assessment and design in support of a safer entry and whatever else the city feels that it can afford when the time comes. So we are maintaining our vigilance in terms of the safety piece as well. It's an interesting, from our perspective, it's an interesting district improvement plan this year because we have a lot of stuff that we maintain, which is ongoing. But there's this new infusion from the work that a number of people around the district have been doing through this ECLC collaborative, you know, focusing in on student engagement and social support and all that. And also the extent to which we are culturally responsible and sensitive to the needs of our students. And here in the high school, saying that 50% of them are high needs, there's a whole melting pot that goes into that. We, as a force, as a workforce, teaching these children have to find ways that make us more receptive, sensitive, and have stronger guides to be as inclusive as we possibly can. So from my perspective, that makes us a particularly interesting district improvement plan. And you'll be hearing more about those initiatives because it's not going to happen in one year. It's something that we're really going to have to work towards and strive towards, but will make us that much more sensitive and hopefully effective in addressing these buckets.
Any questions? Are we approving this tonight or putting it forward to you?
We, no, we would.
I just have a question before we get to that point. Does this improvement plan cover all the requested needs of the district that were in the CPR report and the NIES? In other words...
The CPR is clearly manifest here.
I know we've addressed a lot of these.
Particularly with self-evaluation. If you're specifically referring to the vocational program...
Well, not just vocational, but a lot of it.
With respect to the coordinate program review, yes, we have met and matched. And many of these are consistent with that. And we're faced with another round of self-evaluation, which we're now working on, which is due sometime in May, if I'm not mistaken. So my, the short answer is yes.
So just to elaborate on what you just said a little bit, the second round of self-evaluation that's due in May, are those things that might need to be put into this plan? Or do you think you captured most of the...
Well, because of the, they've gone from a six-year cycle to a two-year cycle. And because we just did our coordinate program review, they're sort of in a position whereby they're going to have to more or less ask us the same thing with respect to civil rights, special education, and English language learners. And it's already, it's incorporated in the budget. And I believe that it's mostly incorporated in here as well.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. And same with the NIES concerns?
The NIES is, I haven't really reflected on the NIES here, except in the area of the Higher Order Thinking Skills, where it talks about developing the curriculum at the high school based upon the Understanding by Design framework. That is compatible and consistent with the NIES. But you'll certainly see that in the school improvement plan.
I'll see what, what you said.
The NIES piece, right. And we do refer here to the turnaround plan as well.
So is there anything else from the NIES that should be in here, do you think? I just want to make sure we've covered our bases before I come in. No, I mean, I'm not, day to day, I just want to make sure that four months from now, we're not hearing about an issue that should come out here.
Right. The high school has met and has developed its self-improvement plan. And they have received approval for that self-improvement plan. They now have between one and two years to implement and then demonstrate what the outcomes are going to be so that by 2020 or 2021, the NIES comes in, the committee comes, they do their full process. My tendency slash bias has been to sort of see that as the high school piece. And we can certainly incorporate it in here, but I'd like to see a lot of it coming from the school improvement plan itself.
I just want to make sure it gets done.
Understood.
This is the accountability that we approved. So I just want to make sure from a school committee perspective that we've addressed.
And I can say that, in fact, that they have done their self-evaluation plan. It has been monitored, reviewed, and they have been given the green light to go ahead and implement. And if you'd like a report on that sometime in the near future, I'd be glad to invite Mr. Cook to come in and talk about it.
I think it's always helpful to get enough data as we go. Stay here and by one or two, six months, yeah.
But we will be having school improvement, individual school improvement plans. After this is approved, they use this to, as a template for their individual school.
If I could just add that the turnaround plan and the NIES plan, there's going to be a lot of overlap. We're in the process, I had mentioned, we've gotten the grant to fund the turnaround plan development and such. And we are in the process of bringing on a consultant, a gentleman by the name of Dan French, who is associated with the ECLC process. So everything's sort of woven together. So there, and Greg, I know, has spoken to Mr. French about both integrating what the NIES self-evaluation is all about, but also bringing an objective perspective and giving some review. There is a group that will be coming in, Schoolworks, in April. And they'll be doing a one-to-two-day focus survey review of the high school. And we're hoping that we'll be able to put all those pieces together. And then by the end of June or July, we'll have the turnaround plan in place. But it will be heavily influenced by the NIES and hopefully also by this facilitation from an outside consultant who has done this work before.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion to accept district improvement?
Some.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to make a comment. An awful lot of work to address, not only the complete plan, but to have everybody involved. And I think it addresses so many areas of need or desires for improvement at different levels and in different areas that it's very comprehensive.
Any other, for other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's meaningless. Thank you very much. And move on to the school calendar. Do you need a packet? Anybody want to say anything about the school calendar?
There is.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Takes time, you know. Quick calendar again. School calendar is largely similar to this year except for two more significant pieces. The first, we start after Labor Day. Most of the dates, half-days, professional development days are similar to what they would have been a day, a day earlier or later, depending on how things fall. There are one minor adjustment. The elementary schools have more half-days than any other level. And this was a number of years ago. We had, if you recall, we had, we were just launching into BSRI work. There was so much happening in math and literacy at the elementary levels that the principals requested more early release time. And so we added four days at that time. Not that everything's over and done with and there's no more learning going on, but the principals feel that so much has happened for professional development and work over the last five years that they are in better shape. And now they want to come back to a more reasonable number of days. So, you know, there are concerns about student attendance on half-days. And so, teacher attendance, perhaps. So we'll start next year by dropping one of the elementary half-days. If everything looks good, maybe that leads to dropping another one the following year. So the one half-day for elementary schools in January goes away. Secondly, there was another, and then this is the big one, and it happens every six, seven years where it's June, sorry. We would be, would have been returning on January 2nd, which is a Thursday. Because the day falls so late in the week, if you recall, about six, seven years ago, we had a two-week break at the winter holiday break. And in talking with the principals, they were very concerned that it would be difficult to get people back to school, perhaps from vacations for a Thursday, Friday. And so the recommendation was to have, because of the timing of the other days, to have a full two weeks off with a return on January 6th. In conjunction with, because it would be a two-week break, it's traditional to have a half-day of school on the day before this break. But because of the 25th falling, not till midweek on Wednesday, Christmas falling on that day, that the recommendation was to make the 20th be a full day and not, again, fall into the, well, it's a half-day, it doesn't really matter, I don't really need to go to school kind of issue. But have that be a full, regular day of school. So go right up the full day on the 20th and then have those two weeks off. So that's the...
Too much.
Excuse me?
Sorry.
You'll hear it later.
Are there any questions?
Not any questions, but, well, a question. Having two weeks off for some of our working parents might be an awful lot. And I'm just curious if maybe the Y or some other organization have, you know, should we talk to them about, for that second week? Do you have programs that our families, that we can make sure our families are aware of? Because I was just thinking, it's quite a long time of your, you know, counting your vacation days.
Yeah, and certainly something that I know we've done in the past and we can do.
But they can't accommodate everything.
Joel? I'm curious as to the Good Friday half-day, whether that comes up in the study. I mean, I don't know that, that that still makes sense in 2019, 2020, that Good Friday is a half-day holiday.
Traditionally, we've only had it when it was... We've had no school if it's the day before the beginning of vacation. If it's Good Friday falls on the, you know, the vacation.
But this year, it's just kind of, it's out there.
What day is Good Friday?
It's a half-day? I'm looking for it.
10th to 17th of April, is that right?
It's not.
No, the day, I'm looking at last night, I guess Saturday's one of the half-days.
Friday, the 10th.
Pretty little release.
Yeah, I mean, it is so.
I thought we stopped doing that.
I thought we stopped doing that.
I think there may have been sporadic on off. This is one of those years where it's not leading to vacation. Again, of practicing being raised at. But I understand the tradition behind it. The tradition behind it requires students to be at school at 11:30 that morning in order to fulfill their Good Friday obligations. Should they have some?
I'm absolutely fine with it, but that's your call. I know that the issue has come back to school committee in, I'm trying to recall which year, not too long ago, where it was removed from the calendar. And there was a lot of pushback during the year from parents and a number of calls. And it came back to school committee and it was restored during the year by school committee. Do you have a half-day? Do you recall that?
Didn't you, didn't you at some point do some research on who, on other districts and how they dealt with it? My recollection is that you came to us with some...
Maybe.
Maybe.
I knew it. It's a done deal, I thought, yeah. It's, that's fine. It's not a... From my perspective, is the fewer number of half-days...
Yeah, I think that half-days tend to be problematic. Half-days on Fridays tend to be absences.
I agree.
It's a lost day anyway.
It's a lost day.
Half-days on Friday.
On a Friday.
Am I have a question?
Yeah, okay.
The Christmas vacation, don't we ordinarily, isn't the 24th a half-day?
24th?
Yeah, Christmas Eve, don't we go to school?
No.
It's usually always...
24th, no.
23rd is a half-day.
And the city calls a holiday on that too.
I know, they, yeah. It'll probably be a holiday those two weeks. Well, Monday and Tuesday are probably a holiday called on the city.
See, I don't know that it's the right time now. It should be there until discussion, right? Yeah, but I mean, I obviously am not going to support about long vacation, especially given the start... given the starts so early, the starts. Can you scroll back up so we can bring it up into the screen? So the last day, they're out the 20th. So even if, even if they came back on the 2nd, they still have, you know, a long, it's a long span of time, right? There are Christmas vacations that are shorter than that even if. And so almost one of those things where, again, and I will admittedly defer to the experts here, anecdotally has a student with students after a longer, sometimes a spin-up period, a welcome, like, okay, like, you know, you haven't done this for, you know, 12 days or whatever it is, let's like remember how to behave in class again, let's remember how to remember what we need for class, that sort of thing. Sometimes these shorter weeks help ease students back into the program.
That's certainly, that's a perspective I think you'd find.
Sure.
Sure, yeah.
Come back and find out that the project wasn't done.
I'm, I'm putting out there as a request from all the principals who feel that we will, they will see some fairly empty buildings in, on those Thursdays and Fridays, we won't know until it happens.
I also did a little informal asking of some parents, asking how they feel about a two-week vacation, because I do remember when I was younger, there was the two weeks. And, and that it was a long break. But anyway, the feedback was, that feedback, that a lot of families wouldn't come back for Thursday and Friday. You know, good luck getting the families back, first of all.
I think we get a vote on the table, have this discussion since we're deliberating.
Yeah, okay. So there are a number of issues that we have with this calendar, but first of all, we need to make a motion to accept the calendar as presented.
So moves it.
Second.
And now we'll open it up to discussion or proposal for amendments.
So I propose to amend the calendar to amend the Good Friday half-day, make it a full day of school.
Second, is there any discussion on the amendment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, is there any further discussion or further amendments?
Oppose amendments who amended the calendar for a return date from holiday break as January 2nd rather than January 6th.
Okay, do we have a second? Do you want to discuss it?
Yeah, 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 a second. A second for discussion.
All right, there we go. Now, discussion.
I guess I would want to amend Joel's amendment to add December 23rd to be a day of school. So that they have to go on one day.
Well, let's take, let's take them one at a time. Amending an amendment just gets too complicated for my poor old brain. Let's start with the, the return date being January 2nd. Is there discussion?
I, I looked at the two-week break and then I immediately looked to see when we'd get out of school in June to see if it would push us too late. And it seems like a comfortable end of school year on June 17th or June 25th. So I was fine with two weeks. And I thought for a change, families might appreciate, some families might appreciate having the longer break. And if we could figure out a way to accommodate families that might have, you know, childcare issues with some alternatives for them outside of the district, it would make it easier for everybody. So I was okay with the two-week.
I'm looking at the last day of school and you had two snow days and your two days before Fiesta.
And we're not giving people Good Friday off.
But yeah, that's, that's.
Three snow days are two days, but also you've got 50% high needs at the high school. How many of these parents are going away on vacation this Christmas vacation?
Exactly.
A lot more are staying here than the YMCA gonna call.
I wasn't saying that necessarily they're going away because of having a longer break.
Melissa?
So on the motion, I'm going to agree, I'm going to support this motion because for one, I think the majority of families in this district don't go away for two-week vacations during Christmas, they can't afford it. In addition, the YMCA can only take so many kids during that Christmas break and it's not as many as you would think it is. And I think by asking us to put on the district to find alternatives, that's not going to happen because what is the alternative unless the school opens a program, which we know that's not going to happen? So I just think the days off are too much. I think most families in reality struggle during vacation to find childcare and this is putting additional strain on it. And the time on learning in this district is minimal. I think we have more than enough half-days and I just think we need more time in the classroom. So I am in no way going to approve the long vacation and approve the amendment that's on the table.
It doesn't, just for the record, it doesn't change the time on learning? It just, I mean, with.
I'm just adding that to the problem. I don't even agree with as many half-days as we have. You know, that's another issue, which is why I agree to the, whether it's Good Friday or not, it's a struggle. The parents I talked to, it's a struggle. And we're minimal time on learning in this district and we need to improve to the level two again, or the level one.
Yeah, just, you know, again, in my experience, a lot of people, they celebrate New Year's and then they go back to work on the 2nd. And that's another end of the week where the children at home and the parents need to go back to work. And if they're able to get to school, that might be easier on families.
Any further discussion?
I agree that it's a stress around the family that have to deal with that at the end of that week after having a stressful period anyway for families. So.
Yeah, I can see it. I can definitely see it both ways.
Yeah. Okay, are we ready to vote on the amendment of returning after holiday break on January 2nd as opposed to the 6th? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Now, is there further discussion on the calendar as it exists or amendments?
No, I was going to ask, but it's ridiculous.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and it's been amended twice. And wherever Maria is, I hope she got those. And we will, do you want to vote?
I'm sorry, I want more pieces, just to get it out there. And I generally don't know the answer. Is there a 30-second answer as to why, what determines whether we come back before or after Labor Day?
It's in the contract, the teacher's contract.
Yeah, okay. It has to do with when Labor Day falls, if it falls before the.
If it falls on the 4th or earlier, it's after, or before the 4th, it's.
It's a date.
Whatever the date is, it revolves around after.
When I was here, it's in the contract, but I never quite get.
If it's the 4th or after, then it's before. If it's before the 4th, it's after. That way you're not cutting into August too early, you're not starting too late.
I mean, there's no discretion at our level in this arena to adjust that.
It's in the contract.
Any further discussion? All in favor for the school calendar as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And we'll move on to.
I have a follow-up question. So once it's approved, do we post it so that the families are aware that it's right there and do we?
Post it tomorrow. Well, calls already. We should, we should go back to the GTA and, because we'd already spoken with the president of the GTA, she gave it her informator, but now it's been amended, we should let her know that, see if there's any kickback. But we'll try to get that as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'd rather get the feedback. If there is any.
Hopefully.
I know there's been.
We'd like to check our number of votes.
This has been broached before, but there has been some discussion in other communities of eliminating February and April vacation and having one vacation in March.
Spring break.
Which would get you out a week early. Not that I'm suggesting that. Oh, yeah. Eliminating.
I read it, just have one.
That actually takes a couple of years, but you know, that's what most people.
Well, the last time we talked about it was 10, 12 or 14 years ago. And the pushback we got was that people had bought timeshares and their lives, their lives would be ruined.
Yeah, right, that we can, that we can stow, be adusable.
So anyway. Moving on to the highlight of the evening, which is a lot to say after all of this, the superintendent's report.
Put this on the show. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. There was today, in fact, a kickoff, what was referred to as kickoff meeting regarding security measures, architectural and otherwise, at both Gloucester High School and O'Malley. Dorn Ritty was, was there, there was a presence from the police department, the principals for both the middle and the high school as well. The, the major issues were, A, architectural, meaning what is needed to verify who's visiting and what their purpose is? What is the entry sequence so that you can go walk from the home into the hospital, into the high school, and then make a quick left and you're gone and disappear without knowing where you are? There was talking about if there is architectural changes and structural stuff, looking at windows and glazing the windows for security. And also location and proximity of the SRO office. The second major issue after architectural had to do with visual and communication issues. We discussed the state of the intercom system, the effectiveness of the current camera system, what needs to be done for the doors to make sure that they're also added to the security. And then the third piece had to do with, this came primarily from the police, they've been talking about this for a while, had to do with emergency management and setting up incident command rooms with access to cameras and PA systems. If, if there should be an armed shooter or if something should happen, you need to be able to communicate to the school at large and not just have one place where that can happen because anything can happen, there's no communication. So those were the three areas. Dorn Ritty's going to go back and begin to play with those things. There was some discussion as well about the, what happens to car darts and to, you know, to create havoc. And particularly the O'Malley cafeteria was brought up as an issue. They'll come up with a list of things and that we'll have to prioritize and then we'll see what can be done and what can be done at what cost.
I was there last night and we voted yes.
Yeah. To the 20,000.
I see it's only, it's on their consent agenda, did they vote to send it out to subcommittee?
No, no, they voted to appropriate.
They did?
Yeah.
So it already went through.
So we got the money and we started having the conversations, right? Item number two, MCAS updates, this is just to clarify, the district is aware that there are new accommodations that have been established for English language learners participating in the next generation MCAS exam. And a number of these were not available for English language learners prior to, I'm not going to go through the whole blitney, I don't think it's necessary for us, but our schools are aware of these. And the extent to which it will help facilitate the test taking for ELL students will have served its purpose. Item number three, very recently, I received a call from the chairman of the Gloucester Board of Commissioners of trust funds and informing me that there are gifted monies and assets held by the Cape Town Savings Bank and managed for the commission by the bank, which some of which are dedicated to Gloucester Public Schools. There are about 16 in all, about five, four or five of the trust funds are actually targeted directly toward the schools. However, they, they are archaic, they're old and some, and the purposes of them are not necessarily relevant to today's needs. For example, one of the trusts is for the purpose of establishing and maintaining an athletic prize fund for awards and prizes to children participating in athletic games or competitions on the playground known as the Oval in St. Gloucester. So the issue is in looking at these five trusts either separately or possibly even bringing them together, can we identify contemporary uses for them? And they have already, through the council, the board has already notified the attorney general's office, the charitable division, and asking them about what can and cannot be done. The attorney general's response has been to send out just a series of basically fundamental questions and has asked that the school committee and the administration answer those particular questions. So respectfully, it should go, I would presume, to the building and finance subcommittee at the next meeting. And with the school committee's indulgence, we'll take a look at it, take a crack at it and provide some non-binding thoughts or recommendations so that there's something on the table when the BNF has opportunity to begin to look at this and then ultimately bring those suggestions to the school committee. And then we can respond back to Mr. Weiner, who in turn can send it back to the attorney general and the process goes on. What, the outcome that I think everyone would like to see is that this doesn't go to probate court because then the cost will be, you know, cutting right into it. There are five trusts out of 16, as I mentioned. Totalling the principal is $147,133. The, what's referred to as the income, I presume that means interest, is $69,221. This is what's, we're looking at. Okay? And that's it.
Remember that we accept the superintendent's report.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And we will move on to committee reports. And the only committee report we have is from BNF Chairman Gross. We'd like to report out, there's a number of action items under action that have come out of this, so why don't you just hit the, the things that aren't action?
I will. Superintendent just discussed the John Low Trust, we discussed this whole trust situation that's at the Cape Town Savings Bank. We also looked at online fundraising policy, which then also brought into, brought our attention to gifts, gift policies and fundraising policies. So upon examination, they all appeared to need a little bit of updating. And so we tabled those to work on them. I think we'll have to sit down and look at that before the next BNF meeting and come up with some language suggestions on those. We did the budget presentation. We had a breakdown of the, the requests for out of district choice, which we're going to come up, but just, it was eight students that parents have enrolled in other districts that then that district sent to a tuition-based specialist school. And then we get the bill. And so it wound up to be $349,000, $49,549 for the eight students that were chos out. Two of those, to be noted, we would get, one's 81,750. So that entitles us for some circuit breaking money there. And another one was $53,390, which is a minimal amount because it's just over the threshold. And that was really, those are the highlights. The IT operations manager salary, went through, you know, current district expenditures, DPW open and close tickets, pretty good numbers there. Food service is okay, student debt went down a little bit, but it's up over 10,000. But it's still way below. There is, was some discussion about how much, how labor intensive it is for the bad debt collection. Is there any merit in using an outside collection agency and what kind of? there any merit in using an outside collection agency and what kind of, what kind of tariff would you have to pay for that, I guess is what he did that. So, that was just discussed and no add nothing, no action taken. Service director has not a very good job of trying to keep that down to a minimum. And that was about it to the action items that we have.
Okay, let's move on to our action items. The first item is that we have acceptance of a grant from Gloucester Education Foundation with a loan of twenty-five hundred dollars for Plumco Elementary School Playwrights Program.
Seven. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have the second reading of the school choice policy, J F B B. And I don't believe we made any changes to it from the first reading.
I would just reiterate that this was, we had requested Attorney Michael Joyce to provide us with a workable copy, this is what he sent, with the perhaps exception of item number four and seven, which were topics of discussion last meeting, virtually all of this comes out of chapter seventy-six, section twelve, so. Our position is that this does deal with some of the concerns that we have.
Do we want to waive the actual reading?
Remember that we waived the actual reading.
It's for those of you interested, it's in our packet, it's available on the website. Can we get a second on the waiting reading?
You can second.
What?
You can second.
I can second? Second, is there any discussion on waiving the reading? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the school choice policy filed, J F B B, as presented?
Seven.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And move on to the next action item, which is the approval to adjust the salary of the I T operations manager to seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents, and this was taken up at B N F.
It was taken up at B N F, and the B N F did recommend unanimously to the full committee to increase the I T operation manager salary by two hundred and sixty-five hundred dollars to bring it up commensurate with, really with the city counterpart. And now, do we want, I can go through this, or we can have Grant give us a quick.
Yes, these monies are not a budgetary increase, they're in the I T's budget.
They're in the I T budget.
Under another salary item.
Those are stipend.
Stipend.
The intern stipend.
Why don't you just say it for a word.
It's not the title, it's not the total, there's still twelve thousand something left in that line item that's in the two thousand and twenty, but I just want to make sure that people understand that this is also in the two thousand and twenty budget, so it's no, it's not an increase to his salary there, it's a transfer.
It's cost neutral, it's a transfer from one item to an actual.
One personnel item to another personnel item, within both budgets.
Correct. So, the current money that's in this budget, we're looking at doing a stipend for this year, and then it will transfer next year's budget to his base. Right now, we're looking at some additional projects that are above and beyond the scope of what he's doing today. We spec'd out, priced out what it would be to hire a consultant to come in, the amount of money that we would have to have them come in and do that, it's extremely cost advantageous for the district to do this, plus, I mean, his work is commendable, and he's outstanding, I really can't do my job without this individual, so making the recommendation to commit, increase his salary is something that I strongly fight for, so.
I just want to add, the personnel reviewed this too, and we questioned Grant, and it was a full recommendation from Personnel Subcommittee to.
Any questions?
I would like to also say that Grant did provide B N F with a breakdown of what the additional responsibilities or continued larger scope of responsibilities, if anybody's interested, they can get that from Grant. So, I say move that we adjust the salary of the I T operations manager to a total of seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It carries forward.
Thank you very much.
The next item is to authorize the CFO to request from the city council a special budgetary transfer in the amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars for out-of-district expenses to be paid through the school's choice program. So, Tony touched on this, what this is, is the, we, students chosse out to different districts, the district then decides with their group that they cannot handle the special needs of the student, and they choose to send them to a private setting. And what happens is, we get the bill for that cost, although we have no say or any opportunity to propose an alternative option. Conceivably, we may have an in-house program that would cover the student's disability, but we don't get to weigh in on that. The money comes from the reduction of the city's chapter seventy funding. So, the city, nobody paid, the state pays the bill, and then they just take it away from the city. So, the agreement that we have with the city is that we, because we would receive any special needs funding, including circuit breaker, but also the grant funding, that we would reimburse the city for those costs.
Because we also budget those costs.
Yes, they're in our budget. So, but we need to transfer this, similar to the police offices in the high school, we have to transfer the money to the city so they can be paid. This is more like being reimbursed. So, that's what this is about, so do we have a motion?
I move that we approve to authorize CFO to request from the city council a special budgetary transfer in the amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars for out-of-district expenses to be paid through the school's choice program.
Second, discussion.
Just because I think it should be said every time it comes up until it changes addition to the chapter seventy money for the payment of this out-of-district placement, we also lose the chapter seventy money for the original school choice allocated to the receiving district, correct?
No, we don't lose, they don't double dip.
We don't reimburse the city for that, the city takes that hip.
No, there is no double dip, you don't get the five thousand on top.
My understanding, the Gloucester, some of those on, you know, Washington Street in Gloucester, choices into Rockport, there's a reduction in funds that come to Gloucester and an increase that goes to Rockport. Rockport then says, hey, we can't service the S I E P or the special needs, it goes out of district and an eighty thousand dollar annual bill comes. Gloucester pays eighty thousand dollar bill, does not get that school choice money back, and Rockport continues to have that school choice allocation, and this is not a Rockport student.
Well, I don't know.
If they pay Rockport, they shouldn't be paying Rockport because we are having that reduced out of our budget, the eighty thousand dollars, so they don't have, they have no cost of that child in their district.
I thought they still received as they were.
I thought that too, and I asked that question, and Patty, the special ed director, told me, no, they do not, that we, so I will ask it again, to make sure that those, the thing is, ask the, get the city's list and give that.
So, if we would otherwise take them just being a simple choice into Rockport, that thing goes away.
Right, exactly.
Again, added back into our, the numbers come into our foundational, but we pay the eighty.
We pay, because we're paying for that tuition.
Sure, sure.
We pay that.
Rockport administered them, they're getting placed out, we pay it because they're a resident of Gloucester, but because they're not actually attending a Rockport school instead of a Gloucester school, we don't lose the count, we don't gain the count.
That's what I was led to believe, because I thought that same thing, that we don't have.
The other thing to note here is that there is fifty-five hundred dollars that was lost in the reimbursement to Gloucester for students that no, regular rates, who is a choice out, is the same, is managed the same way in that it is reduced from the city's chapter seventy allocation.
So, it is.
No, 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 all the other kids, all, just the regular kids, not special ed kids, all the wriggling kids that choice out, the city, we do not reimburse the city for that money, it's just the six special ed. So, they absorb that cost. So, we have a motion and a second, and is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We have, and this was taken up by B N F also, the approval to authorize the CFO to appropriate eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-four cents from the main office contingency account to rectify a teacher's placement on the incorrect step for F Y eighteen, which was last year. This was just a bookkeeping error, as best I can tell, and, you know, when undetected, but we do owe this teacher eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and the motion here is to take it out of our contingency. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next one is to approve, approval to authorize the CFO to request permission from the city council to pay back to the teacher the amount of eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-four cents from the F Y nineteen funds to rectify her placement in the incorrect step in F Y eighteen, so any time we have to pay last year's bills out of this year's money, we have to get permission from the city council.
Seven.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The third item, and this was taken up by B N F also, is to approve and to authorize the CFO to request permission from the city council to raise the preschool revolving fund spending amount to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city council every year during the budget process sets limits on revolving accounts, and those limits are not supposed to be exceeded, and where the potential is that we may exceed, it's currently a hundred and thirty-five thousand for the preschool, and they want to, if we, so that we don't go over it, we want to raise it to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Moving on, I'll stretch here, M S B A, the leadership group and the working group met since our last meeting, but the regular, the building committee is not, although it meets Thursday, Thursday tomorrow, but the leadership group has developed a, some guidelines for design and passed them on to the working group, which has amended them, and this is a document that is being produced, and these are the guidelines for what we are, parameters that we're looking for in the design of the new school. And we will have a presentation in our next school committee meeting from Dorian Riddy or an update on where we're at on this project. So, this is just for your consumption, although we will be looking to approve these at school committee level at our next meeting, okay?
The leadership group has gone through a spreadsheet, a very extensive spreadsheet, which lists all the kinds of rooms and space that a elementary school would require. Next to it, there's the M S B A square footage that's normally committed to that particular area, a nurse's office, an administrator's office, a grade one classroom, a small special education intervention room, all there's all these numbers, and based upon our need, those, you know, the square footage was discussed, some of the interior stuff was discussed, should the copies be outside of the hallway, should they be inside, all this stuff, and then they began to talk about proximity, and what you see here is a rudimentary sketch of what the result of the thinking, the result of the guiding principles that adhere of where and how things could be located, that, similar to West Parish, it could be an academic wing, and the public areas could be then on a separate section.
Did you know that?
Bigger?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't think it's going to give you the kind of resolution.
No, I can read boards now, I can.
Yeah, really? Gymnasium, have interior custodian, administration guy, it's a nurse, a small group, extended learning, putting the media center, the library in a central location, there was a discussion about using the media, the library, if a three separate function at the same time, so it's a real hubbub of activity type of thing, for the core academics, I mean, it could be over here, this could be that, but the point is putting the core academics over here, they'd like to see this central art, music, gymnasium, and so on and so forth. So, this is a very basic, crude picture of the guiding principles and the discussions about the types of rooms that are going to be needed, everything from the library to the timeout room and everything in between. It's an interesting process.
And this, you know, we'll get much more extensive.
Yeah, yeah.
Review this. There's that presentation of all of this stuff at our next meeting. We have, we met with the Veterans P T O on Monday, last Monday, and we did meet with the East Gloucester P T O a couple, three weeks ago. And we try to answer as many questions as we can, and let people know what's going on.
How does it turn out, et cetera?
It was substantially greater than the turnout at East Gloucester.
I thought it was this meeting.
They were, I don't know, excited is the right word, but they were definitely open to what's happened.
Yeah, it was a very good meeting, it was a good cross-section of parents, and they asked very, you know, pertinent, pertinent questions, I would say.
At any point in this process, I know that the building committee around toured a bunch of other examples of recently built or currently being built schools, and obviously, I can see from reading this that, you know, what they took away is like, oh, we like that, you know? But it makes sense, I know that Dr. Immel is not involved with this building committee, but it makes sense to kind of have her meet with them at this stage, go, hey.
This works, this doesn't.
Here's, we all know this great West Parish, just, hey, here's a couple of things, like, if I could get back in time machine, we would have, we thought it's going to grate on paper, and then when it built, we said, oh.
Oh, sure.
I get the impression they're in communication.
The other thing that has come up in both of the presentations, the P T O, is that a lot of the parents have not seen West Parish. So, what I suggested is that we would make arrangements to do a tour for East Gloucester and Veterans parents some Saturday morning.
You should put it out to everybody.
Yeah, we'll put it out to everybody, sure. So, we will organize that, I guess.
The last time, when they did it before, it was interesting to see how many community members came to see what the school looks like, and so you never know who's gonna show up.
We've had two requests to name different facilities for, for someone, and I believe, and Kathy Mountell knew this, because you probably remember, you know, that the last time we did this, we decided that we would form a committee that would be made up of the three chairs to review these requests, so there are two, so we will try to put that together. One is a request to name the weight room at Gloucester High School for Greg Swinson, and the other is a request to name the baseball field at O'Malley for Jared Neil.
No. No, isn't that field near us?
That was, they, that was my impression, so those, that's why we have a committee to look into these things, because that was one of the big problems we had when we did name the commons at O'Malley for Al Swackler, was that we were gonna name the auditorium, but it, although there's no plaque there, it hadn't been named, and on and on. So that's, that's part of it, is doing the research, find out if it's already been named for somebody.
I was just gonna ask that, is there a list anywhere of what's been named?
No.
So we could essentially take a vote on something that's already been named, so that sounds premature.
Well, you, you, what you need to do is, somebody needs to find out.
Okay.
And I thought that would be the committee's job.
And also, have we had any requests for anything for Brian Tarter?
No. Like I say, it's, 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 almost anybody can request these things.
Are they in writing, these requests?
I believe that Greg Swinson wants.
I have an email on Mr. Swinson.
And we also, I believe that Mr. Rowland had come in with something on the, on the other ones. Yeah, well, that's what we know, so I'm just putting that out there, that we're gonna have to deal with it because we can't just ignore it completely. The preschool location and the five, the fieldhouse floor, I had a discussion with Mr. Distino about the costs, as it may have been related, those two projects were given to Doran Whittier to, to look into, to work on, and that was all agreed to, but then Doran Whittier sent work orders to DPW, which they wanted them to sign off on, and they sent them on to Gary because they didn't wanna pay for him, which I went back to Mr. Distino and said, you know, this was not part of the deal, you know, these, these are priorities, we're trying to get these things done, you know, it's, it's, the discussion about the fieldhouse floor was before Christmas, and the request to prioritize the preschool location was as soon as it was announced that Doran Whittier was doing a facility study, so.
Circles.
It's the, you know, the, the cogs of government churn very slowly. The, the, the deal, what Mr. Distino proposed is they would pick up the cost of the preschool location if we could pick up the cost of the, the fieldhouse floor, which is paid at ten thousand dollars. The, the other one was thirty-five, so, so they're gonna pick that up.
Studying?
The, to, for the preschool.
Studying?
Yeah.
Ten thousand is for.
It's just to develop a plan for the different possible stuff, so I would like to refer the ten thousand dollar request to BNF to review this.
Wait, what is the question?
Ten thousand dollars for Doran Whittier to develop a plan to, to remediate this fieldhouse floor.
It was my understanding that that was already in the list, and I recall, two meetings ago, you reported back, having heard that Doran Whittier was almost done, and then Melissa and I ran into Doran Whittier at the AG Vets meeting, and they gave a very different impression, like, oh, we're still, you know, everything's a priority. So I just wanna, you know, I really don't understand at this point what is we can do, but from where I'm sitting, watching the way things happen, you know, March starts on Friday, which means we are, ooh.
Three months old.
Less, less than, right, so basically, we need to have an answer, an answer, this needs to be out to bid in about four months if we're gonna be in, in by August of twenty twenty-one, right?
So that was, you know, like I say, this was, this was not, I didn't know this until it showed up in Gary's mailbox, that, that they weren't doing anything on it because of, they hadn't gotten a signed up work order. Now, since then, we've had discussions with Brad Door, and said, listen, we're gonna get this, we gotta get this going. He said, basically said, as long as I know I'm gonna get table, start working on it.
Start working.
So when this was discussed, when we had Brian Lefatter, was it Brian Lefatter?
Yeah.
Brian Lefatter, sorry, I have too many Lefatters, here, when we were doing the motion afterwards, I specifically said, are we doing the right motion to get this done the right way? And we had the mayor at the table, and we discussed it, and they said, I think even she said it, get Doran Whittier to do it, and it's gonna get done. So here we are, sitting at this table, right back where we were before we took that vote, and now it's getting referred to our BNF, for what?
Well, you wanna vote on appropriating the ten thousand dollars right now? It's, they're working on it, this is, pushing, putting it to BNF and then bringing it back to the school committee for a vote, because we'll have to take the money out of the contingency, it's not gonna hold it up, it's moving forward.
Wait, I wanna get into process, because we've been yelled about, about process, and we took votes to send things to the city council to get on their agenda, and I believe the school floor was one of them. So there is nothing before this committee, we did the right thing by sending it to the city council. You're here striking some deal with someone about something.
I'm just telling you, this is the process.
Exactly, but that didn't come officially back to us in writing or come to the school committee as a whole from someone to the city, so as far as I see it, it's still in the city council's agenda, like, we pushed it there, and we need some formal response from the city council if it's gonna come back here and now come out of our budget.
I don't think it's the city council, it sounds like the city with administration.
I thought Jim Distino told us that any capital projects we had.
Can we do that? We inform them, that's the end of story.
The city council can't really do anything with it.
Right.
So then why were we required to inform them?
Because it's in the, right.
Because it's in the charter, and we got beat up about doing, but we knew that it doesn't mean anything. City council has no way.
So that leaves it, I'm more concerned with, you know, whether we skip BNF and authorize the ten grand out of the floor, whether we go with the process because, you know, Doran Whittier's told us they'll start. I'm more concerned with, we were told in December that the city was gonna take care of this, and now we're being told again, oh, if you take care of the floor, we'll take care of this. Again, as much as I appreciate the need to get the fieldhouse fixed, if the fieldhouse doesn't get fixed, there aren't a hundred three-year-olds who have to put somewhere two summers from now and administration on, you know, the fieldhouse just continues to be an embarrassment, but we're not, you know, evicted from a rented space, right? So I'm more concerned about whether or not we offer this ten grand, whether the city is actually going to request Doran Whittier actually do this work, because if not, we're gonna be, three months from now going, oh, well, after we appropriated the ten thousand dollars, the city was waiting for something to come through, and they haven't given Doran Whittier the green light, yes, we haven't examined preschool space yet, and now, now we hit our deadline, and we, you know, lost an entire year when we signed, when the city signed the lease again.
Is the PO cut directly from us to Doran Whittier?
It was, no, the PO that you received was, was to the, to, it wasn't PO, they, it was a work order, requesting a PO redrawn.
But would we create our own PO and pay Doran Whittier correct, or would we cut our own? So we would bet, we would pay, we would, for the.
For the fieldhouse?
Yeah.
I wonder if there's like some payment for the preschool, because that's, that's the crisis, you know? The, the fieldhouse is a live situation, the preschool is a crisis situation, if we don't have an answer, you know, I mean, you don't know.
Well, that's just gonna require finding out whether they put it, you know, they put it forward, and.
Yeah, so it would be for city council.
It would have to go before city council, I don't know whether, you know, if they take their money out of it.
Yeah, transfer.
All of which they have to come for, for the city council, so that'd be a question of the city council.
So as you're all aware, and I know it's appropriate for this body in general, I think it would apply, it applies to anybody else, you know, could we request that our chairman go to the next city council meeting at oral communications on a Tuesday night, stand up and say, you know, this isn't on your agenda.
You wanna get no money on your next budget.
I think the thing to do is, is to, is to find out from the city council whether it's, it's been brought forward. I mean, we're, I mean, maybe it hasn't, if it hasn't, then, 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 that's another story.
So then, what happens if, let's say, because, to us, this is, this is one of the more major things we need to deal with, but maybe, maybe the larger city state, it's, you know, one of thirty fires that have been put out right now, and it's maybe, you know, seventeen in that list, if we don't have the information we wanted, we then need to nevertheless make a decision about where this educational space, you know, what we're proposing, and then request it be funded, obviously, which is another battle, but, but all we're trying to do right now is get the, get the information to make an educated decision on, and then if we don't have a pile of information, our options are to make a decision with whatever limited information we have, experiential information, or make no decision, and then almost guarantee we're gonna blow the August twenty-one deadline. So we need, maybe think about whether or not we start, whatever it is we have from previous studies of the spaces that we have or other purposes, and whether it's still that we as a deliberate body could rationally say, okay, listen, we really don't have some more information, Doran Whittier, we need to get the, we need to make an action plan and begin advocating for it, because if we don't start this process now, we're gonna be.
We can pay the thirty-five thousand to Doran Whittier too, we can pay all forty-five thousand, I mean, that would solve it, and we'd be in control.
Well.
There's two hundred left over from last year?
Which was part of that eight seventy-five that goes to prepay, eight fifty-seven, that's a big chunk of that. And so you're, you know, you're, you're, it's, it's all about choices, whether or not.
I mean, again, maybe that's, again, if, if that really does guarantee the church gets pulled.
I don't think that the problem is, you know, I think Doran Whittier moves at a snail's pace.
We don't have snail time.
Yeah, so then, do we appropriate the, the forty-five grand, have someone else?
Doran Whittier, two people, two people submitted on the bid, Doran Whittier, another one that was from, what, Ohio or something?
No, they were.
They were local?
Some of them.
But they never were, they never built a school.
Yeah, that was a problem.
I thought preschool was.
So that we didn't have any, there was, you know, it wasn't like, I, I agree with you, I don't like being in bed with people constantly, you know, I, I, but there was no, I was very disappointed one night, and nobody took out bids.
For the, the city of Long Island.
Yeah, yeah, nobody took out bids, it was like, it's, because nobody wants, I mean, it, it, everything's booming.
I thought the big city review included the preschool.
It should have, I mean, peripherally, but it didn't, you know, it was, is too, I, I don't know what the parameters for that study were, I'm sure we could look up the RFP and find out what they said, but it wasn't specific, I mean, I don't think it was specific, so when I, when.
It was a need assessment.
We sent them letters, we sent, we sent the letters that we're supposed to send, but I went and made it clear to the, that this was the school's priority, that we wanted this done, and there was never any discussion at that point that, well, yeah, but you, this is gonna cost X more money. It wasn't until, it wasn't until this showed up on Gary's desk that, that we had any idea that we.
That's right, this was part of the original scope, and we were just asking if we brought the top, but if this worked out first, we had to go return the rest of the work.
Can I just inject that, so I sent a letter to, an email to Brad Door, this was on February twelfth, that Jonathan spoke with Mr. Distino regarding the work on the fieldhouse and preschool. Mr. Distino stated he would provide funding through stabilization, that mechanism, however, would take over months to process. He wrote back with this understanding that ultimately I'll get reimbursed one way or the other, why don't you hold off on having Gary process those work orders unless, and I can wait for the invoice and go ahead and get started based on that understanding, so there's a tacit, I know this is not the bureaucratic thing, but there's a tacit understanding on the part of Doran Whittier and an oral communication to Jonathan that they will take care of the, of the preschool, the cost of doing an assessment on preschool.
Sure, but we got that oral communicate, that oral assurance in December once already, and then, maybe the person Melissa and I spoke to didn't know, but she and I both asked a question of preschool, and he certainly didn't say anything along the lines of, oh, we're not doing that, we haven't started that yet, he was there, I was like, oh, we're working on that, you know, like, oh, we're almost there, yeah. You know, like, so I, it sounds like we, so, and he emailed Brad saying, hey, we'll take care of it, it sounds a lot like the, hey, we're taking care of it, where did you get the information you had two meetings ago, where you said, hey, here it's almost done?
Well, I did say, I, what I said a couple, was a couple meetings ago, was that, that Mr. Distino, he told us that he had a mechanism to pay for it once, once the plan was, once they had a plan in place. You know, I was, and at, at that time, I was given the impression that it was being, you know, the plan was being worked on. And, and, and when they said it's almost done, he was talking about the big plan, not the specific request, and I didn't know that it was a separate thing, but, so when he said the, the Doran Whittier work is almost done, that's what he was referring to, and my assumption was that that included the preschool.
Theoretically, I've, Dr. Sapphire had not made this communication, there was a universe in which the master plan got finished and came out, and we read it, there was nothing in there informing us about a preschool location.
So back to your original question about referring the ten grand to BNF, do we have enough time for it to go to BNF and then come to our next school committee meeting, or is it something we should approve there?
Probably just take care of it right now.
Because, I mean, I'm all for it to get it done, but I.
Then it, then it puts the pressure right back on them.
Yeah.
You know, and then.
Especially when we know the study's almost done, I mean.
Right.
And then we can start asking our individual city councilors, you know, if you've seen anything yet, what's going on here, you know, that's the way to do it.
I had no reason to believe the, the fieldhouse floor thing wasn't being worked on, because we had that meeting at the, at, at city hall, and was it the next day or two days later, I, I took Brad Door to the, to the fieldhouse with, with, with Brian Lefatter and Joe Lucino over there, and we did the whole, you know, showed him all the issues at that, at the floor, you know, I thought it was, that was doing, being done.
When did the CFO identify ten thousand dollars?
We'll just take it out of, can, our contingency.
And we thank Doran Whittier for the study for the high school floor.
So we devote to have it come out of the contingency first, because we can devote all monies.
Wherever it comes from, I don't worry.
We can do it.
Okay.
I mean, that we, that we, the, the motion would be that we authorize ten thousand dollars to be taken in the school committee contingency fund and be applied to a PO for Doran Whittier to develop a plan for the remediation of the fieldhouse floor.
Second. So I have a question on that, because it's coming from the contingency fund, which many people may confuse as to be extra money laying around, we actually have most of that money, if not all of it, identified for other things, so are we, are we gonna be able to cover other things if?
We're gonna have.
We're gonna have to spend.
We got a lot of work to do on this budget yet, this is, you know, today was just a session.
No, I mean, this is a vicious budget, though, this is a vicious budget.
Yeah, this is a vicious.
Right, I mean, on the open contract negotiations, and that's where.
Well, we also have, we heard tonight, all these new kids going.
Exactly.
And although it's affecting next year's budget, it's affecting this year's budget, and that's where, that's what that money's essentially there for, is unanticipated expenses.
I just didn't know if there was a different fund, or if it has to come out of contingency.
Well, there's other savings here and there and everywhere, you know.
But this would be the right fund.
Well, this is clear, this is the most direct, we don't have to have Gary go through the books and say, oh, this $10,000 in this, you know, whatever account.
Health insurance, I mean, budget is health insurance, but it could come in that what we are paying could be less than what we have.
Well, that's for next year.
Or even for this year.
For this year.
For this whole.
So, the, you were told that if we would cover the 10, they'll cover the 35, was it? Now, is that going to be administration who has the authority to pay, or does that have to go to city council for authorization?
He said it was going to come out of stabilization.
If they, if they take it out of stabilization, it has to go to city council.
So, then, I would want to make this contingent on the city council doing their thing, only because I'd rather spend, again, let's say the city council says, no, we're not, we're not doing that. I'd rather take this 10, and find 25 more, and fund the preschool study than fund the fieldhouse study if the city council declines to do that for us. And I wouldn't want this money to have already been allocated.
Then that's on the city council.
I want the floor fixed.
The city council knows that this creates a success.
It would still, who can, then I would follow it, we're the ones that have to deal with it, right?
I understand.
The kids who are in those classrooms are the ones who are going to be not that looking.
I think both issues are extremely high priority, and liability at the high school and the floor. It's going to take one lawsuit, a negotiator.
They'd be more than likely not vote for the fieldhouse, maybe with the.
Right, well.
This is.
This is the deal they're on.
Well, we have a motion, let's vote the motion, we can talk about the other issue if you want, but right now, we have a motion before us to take $10,000 out of the school committee contingency account in an authorized payment to Doran Whittier for the fieldhouse floor study. And is there any further discussion on that?
So, there, there's a chance here, under this path, we approve this, that we're going to send this money, the city council not investing their money, whether put this study, but not preschool study.
Can happen.
And if we want.
If we can, if we find out that the city council is not going to move forward, then we can revisit this and authorize the money.
If we're authorized to pay the, or open the PO, and the money's spent, if these people do work, rely on the fact that we told them to get paid, we have PO set up, we can't pull it back at that point, right?
Well, the $10,000, we're committing to $10,000 for the fieldhouse floor. If, if for some reason, we get the indication that the city is not going to appropriate the money for the preschool study, we can then appropriate the money for the preschool study ourselves, if that's what we choose to do.
Then we'll be 45.
Yeah, but right now, let's find out whether they're, whether they're, I just don't know.
What I'm getting from the local committee is, you'd rather be 10 in now, the rest of you are 45 in later, than letting your exposure to 35.
Well, I think they both need to be done, and this is just the tip of the ashboard. The bottom line is, we've got to get the city to pay for this stuff after we've got a plan, and that's the big one, you know, so, you know.
And isn't that a plan?
Yeah.
Jonathan, I think about, to close the loop, you should let Mr. Distino know that we relay the communication to Doran Whittier, that they'll take care of the preschool, and we'll take care of, I don't know if we've actually told him that.
I might, I don't know.
We should confirm.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? In favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous, and we will, we will know.
I have, Jonathan, I have one thing.
Even a broken voice.
Leave your budget books, leave your budget books, because it's, I think the information in the back is, I talked to Cody, we can get, there's no prior years information and stuff, it doesn't give us enough info, so, and it didn't get, it didn't get spliced together the way they should be, all, all the details all in one clump in the back, so, leave them, and they'll get, they'll get fixed.
They're going to get tuned up. Is there any further, if anybody wants to talk, spend a wild, a night away, talk about it. Motion, do you agree? Okay, you have a say aye?